...meeting. So if there's any questions, we'll kind of use that format. And so we'll start off, wherever y'all want to start. Y'all want to start with the EDC? Or do y'all want to start some other place? Y'all can decide.
Start with dessert? Okay. Start with dessert.
Dessert?
I'll put this right here.
That's not the case. Yeah.
Yeah. I think we can just go through the regular agenda, starting at the top at A. Everybody agree?
Do you want to start with the appointment of EDC?
A, so EDC?
Yes.
That works for me. Do we want to wait for Stevens, since it's a little complicated?
I'm going to try talking to this mic tonight. But my voice doesn't always pick up.
Yeah, he's coming at 4:30.
Yeah, he said he was going to run a few minutes later.
So I'm wondering if we want to... Right. So do we want to start with something that...
That's less...
Less...
New information? Yeah.
I mean, we could... We could talk about Carrie's position.
I'm going to have Linda be seated during this discussion, since we are doing an hour early. She's going to give a report on EDC and what they're doing.
Right.
And what I want her to do is, if y'all have any questions or whatever, let's address it at this time. I'm not going to have her make the presentation twice. So we're going to do it this afternoon, where we can ask a lot of questions, and then we're going to vote on it during regular session. But there's no reason for her to have to go through this twice, and she appreciated that, too.
Oh, of course. Yeah, yeah.
So if y'all want to start with that, or if y'all want to do this, since that's probably the most complicated of them all.
Being it is the most complicated, maybe we should start at the bottom, then instead, because I'd like Stevens to be here for this discussion as well.
Okay. So y'all start it wherever you want.
We can't make it till 4:30, so...
Carrie's here to answer your questions. We're open.
Okay. So it says on the bottom of the regular agenda, it says, "Discuss and consider resetting location date and time for adopting tax rate." I thought we had set that for November 14 or 15.
Hopefully not November.
Thank you. August, August.
It was August, I hope.
I'm just hoping for cool, that's all.
Yeah. We had done it for next Tuesday, the budget approval, hopefully, you know, we'll have the timeline. I kind of jotted it down on the back. Obviously, next Monday, we will have the budget hearing. We will then, hopefully, council will make a... adopt the budget, or, you know, you have to do something next Monday. So basically, by the end of this week, we need to have two more agendas posted. So we need to have an agenda for next Monday and for next Tuesday. So the one that we...
If you want to change that, we'll just leave it like it is, right?
Yeah, the only reason that I'm kind of going back over that is then on the 15th, we have the issue with this facility at 6 o'clock. So a third-party, you know, loose affiliate, you know, whatever, had this building reserved at that time.
Okay.
What y'all had said was 6 o'clock. So then we kind of threw emails and said, maybe we could use the library. The library has something going on, you know, the library department board, whatever, has something going on at the library at 6. So I think we've talked ad nauseam about the budget and the tax rate, and I think everyone's at a good place for the most part. We're 99% there, hopefully.
Yes.
However, so we cannot have the tax rate hearing and the motion, you know, to the resolution or ordinance, whatever it is, to do the tax rate here at 6 o'clock. So we want to see what y'all's...
Well, doesn't the library board meeting in Juman... I thought I saw Juman here. Doesn't that start at 7? So if we met at 6, would we be done by 7, and therefore, they could meet?
Yeah, so this is... this is y'all's show.
That could work, yeah.
I think 6 would work.
But then we need to change then the location when we get to that point in the agenda. Or the other point was that we could have it here at 5 o'clock. So whatever y'all think makes more sense for residents and for everyone else that's interested to come to the hearing.
Yeah, the only concern I would have is, as we've seen in a lot of our council meetings, we get a lot of folks, a lot more than, I guess, historically. So I would just be concerned, I hate the back... the feedback. My only concern with the library is if we held it there and we get an overwhelming number of people who are concerned and want to come, take part in that, that, you know, we end up standing room only with people out the door. So now, that being said, 5... you guys know me, I have no life. So 5 o'clock works fine for me if we choose to do it down here, but that's up to everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say it is a hearing, so people can voice their opinion on the tax rate that is proposed, so...
So if it's at 5 o'clock, is that the best time for the residents?
Yeah, that's... we need to decide, so...
Right.
I would think...
We could talk to Linda... no, it's Karen, that does the program with John Corsi and Scott Mosher, that they've scheduled this location for a... Yeah, so I think it started at 6, 6:30. So we could ask them to push it back, and then the residents can have ice cream after the... after the...
I mean, I really don't think the actual meeting itself should go much over an hour. So I mean, I'm hoping it's 15 minutes tops, 30 minutes type deal, so that should give us ample time.
I think we're in agreement there. Let's go ahead and move on. We've got a lot of stuff to cover, so... We're going to keep the dates, we're going to have at 5 o'clock on Tuesday, the 15th?
At here.
We'll have it here at 5 o'clock, is that okay? That's acceptable?
And that's for the tax rate?
The hearing and the adopting the tax rate.
The tax rate hearing and adopting the tax rate will be Tuesday, the 15th, at 5, or...
About 5:30, compromise.
Okay.
5:30.
5:30.
Well, I'm just thinking of the residents, if they care and want to come.
Yeah.
And we'll be out of here by when they start at 6:30, I would hope.
Yeah, that's what... I mean, again, nothing has to be... we're not voting on anything in the workshop, so if someone...
But it'd be nice to decide in the...
Yeah, really quickly, during the meeting. Yeah, so if someone can confirm that the Karen Scott's thing is at 6:30. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
I have a question then. We... so we adopt the tax rate on Tuesday, the 15th, and did we adopt the budget then on the 14th?
Well...
That will stay where we...
According to plan, so hopefully, you know, again, that is the way the agenda will be set.
Okay.
Assuming that y'all approve the budget, but even, I think, as a fail-safe, depending on if there's any public comment, you know, during the budget hearing itself, we might need to put on the agenda, even as a fallback, the next day. You just... the sequencing of the stuff, that we could still approve the budget first thing, have the tax rate hearing, and then approve the tax rate. So I think the easy answer is yes, ideally, if everything goes to plan and goes smoothly, but that hasn't always been the case so far. So we'll... yeah, that's the goal, is to have the budget hearing, adopt the tax... adopt the budget on Monday, have the tax rate hearing on Tuesday, and adopt the proposed tax rate, which then, you know, again, that one's more complicated, because you basically have to take the two roll call votes, one for the INS, one for the MNO, so... Okay.
So I guess we'll meet in the library? Will we have to meet in the library?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, back to Plan One.
Okay, yep, so library at...
That's...
At what time?
Well, that's on Monday?
Or Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So that's the 15th.
Right.
If it's in the library, can we meet at 6?
That's what I was looking at. Jimin, what time did you say her meeting was?
Evan.
Yeah, I think 6 should work, then.
I think so, too.
Okay.
Okay, then we're moving right along. I guess you would go back to the next one, Roxanne?
Do we have a time for the 14th? I'm sorry.
I just was going to... just going to reiterate.
That one, I think, wasn't changing.
Monday, the 14th, is going to be the budget hearing and possible adoption at 6:00 PM.
Correct.
Okay, and it will be here in the City Hall. Tuesday, the 15th, is going to be a tax rate hearing and hopefully, adoption at 6:00 PM in the library.
Correct.
Is there a scribble there, buddy?
Sweet, I'm both.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
We're allowing 15 minutes, and we have to get out.
Do you want to consider taking terms tonight, or now you don't do it in the meeting?
Or I mean, if Stevens here...
Now that Stevens here, let's go up to the top and do EDC.
Go ahead and let Linda get going.
No problem.
No, no, we did other things. Yeah, 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 no, we... we did something else, so...
All right. Thank you for coming early, Linda, we appreciate that. Looking forward to hearing what you all have to say. You need to? You need a pen?
Documents, researching what is required of our board, and creating a business plan. The fun stuff is all about completing projects that enhance the well-being of our community, but that's not the end of our responsibilities. As a not-for-profit corporation, we have certain requirements that we must do in order to not only be in good standing with you, the city council, but with the state of Texas and the federal government. So the first thing I'd like to do is ask for city approval on three items required by our bylaws. And the first is the appointment of Terry Hera as an EDC director to serve out the remainder of Stan Briggs' term, which expires on December 31, 2024. The EDC voted unanimously to accept Terry as a director. Terry is a resident of NPR, loves our community, and believes that it's important to make informed decisions that are in the best interest of our community as a whole. Terry's experience includes serving on multiple board of directors, small business owner, and director of a small nonprofit, which includes event planning and fundraising. Terry's experience will be extremely helpful with our 2324 work plan. So the EDC is asking for city council approval on his appointment. Okay, so the second is the EDC's proposed 2324 work plan. We'll be working on commercial property development, studies on how to maximize our city assets, business development, revenue diversification, and community outreach. So we're asking for approval on our work plan. The third is the EDC's proposed budget for 2324. Our budget is aligned with the work plan. We will be spending money on studies to help with commercial development and how best to maximize city assets. My favorite proposed project is business development by way of a new young entrepreneur project. I look forward to sharing more on this project in the future, so we're asking for approval on our budget. So we have just one more responsibility to complete in order to be in good standing with the city council. We are in the middle of a three-year audit for fiscal years 19, 20, and 21. Our CPA expects the three-year audit to be complete by the end of September 2023. So I mentioned previously that the EDC is required to be in good standing with the state of Texas. I'm happy to report that we have filed all of our paperwork, including tax returns with the state, and Texas has given us a clean bill of health, not so much with the federal government. Included in your packet is background information on a little problem we are having with the IRS. I have a recap of what is going on, and I'd be happy to share my notes with you. Or to save time, I can take questions, and I will answer them to the best of my ability, knowing that I'm not a CPA, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not an IRS agent. So I'll do my best. So I depend on the experts. So would you like me to recap what's going on, or do you... if you had a chance to read my timeline? Formation timeline?
I have read it, but I think it would be beneficial for you to...
So I have been working on this for almost a year. So what seems clear in my mind, hopefully, I get across to you as well. So... Just a bit of history. So the EDC Articles of Organization were filed in February of 2011. It was understood by both the city and the EDC that the EDC is a nonprofit affiliate of the City of Morgan's Point Resort and not required to file an IRS annual return of organization exempt from income tax. So between the years 2011 and 2015, the EDC did not operate as a standalone corporation, even though it was. The city was responsible for keeping the books, and the city secretary took the minutes. All audits were done, were included with the city's audits. In 2015, our president engaged Lot Vernon and Company to perform an audit. The audit notes state that the EDC maintains a bank account, and for federal income purposes, the EDC is a not-for-profit organization exempt from federal income tax under IRS Code Section 501(c)(6). In January of 2019, the EDC minutes approve a financial separation from the city to include hiring an outside treasurer secretary to perform all needed financial duties required by the EDC. So that's an important word, "required," as well as recording the minutes. In June of 2022, the board now consists of six members, seven are required, and only two of the six directors were part of the board prior to 2022. The directors know very little about the history of the EDC and the operations of the EDC. And as the new president, I advised the board that we should stop everything and review the governing documents to ensure that we are in compliance with the city, state, and IRS. I have a background in nonprofits for about 30 years, and my first question when I signed on was, okay, we're a nonprofit, why aren't we filing federal income taxes? So in June, we took our first steps. We started researching the EDC, and we reviewed the governing documents. And we requested information and a determination letter from both the state of Texas and the IRS. We got the one from the state of Texas, but we did not get one from the federal government. So red flags came up when we started reviewing the documents. Our bylaws say that an audit is required. The last one done was 2015, and as far as I could find out, that was the only independent audit done by the EDC. Everything else was done with the city. Carrie and I spent an afternoon over at the maintenance building and went through all of the boxes of "do not destroy." And our major problem that we've had is we cannot find any original documents whatsoever. So...
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Because I was an auditor at one point, and I know when you do an audit and you start with a not-for-profit, the very first thing you get is their IRS determination as to what you're organized under. And I'm wondering if Lot Vernon has that in their work papers?
It was not included.
No, not in the report, but they actually have work papers that support everything that goes in their report. I mean, I would think that would be in their audit work papers. If you want to get a copy from...
Right, right. Well, actually, we went to them to get a price on getting an audit done, and it was way above our budget.
Yeah, but that's not what she's asking.
No, what I'm saying is, we went to them first, and they didn't bring up anything with the history with us or anything.
We can request it. Can we request that from Lot Vernon? And then we'll get the original determination letter, hopefully, and that will be key.
Well...
How were we incorporated?
Well, we also asked for a determination letter from the IRS, and there's no record of Morgan's Point EDC has filed for a 501(c)(6).
I don't know how Lot Vernon can say, "We've been incorporated under this," without documentation, but...
Right.
Let's leave it for now.
Yeah.
Let's maybe try to follow up with Lot Vernon, so that we know how EDC was originally organized.
And actually, that is not included in the Articles of Organization, and it's also not included in the bylaws. And all the nonprofits that I ever dealt with, that was included, if you were a 501-whatever. And that's not in either one of the documents. So that's kind of...
Hopefully, the auditors have something.
So, yes. So anyway, so we went ahead and tried to get a determination letter from the IRS, and there was no record of our EIN number, our EIN, or our 501(c)(6) nonprofit status, and no tax returns had ever been filed. So, like I say, we tried to find the originals, and we cannot find anything. So the next step, what we did is to be in compliance with the bylaws, is that we hired an outside CPA. And the first thing he did is try to get that determination letter, or power of attorney. And that's when it showed up, is the EIN number that we had did not match any of their records.
IRS's.
Right. And so... Um...
Page one.
Oh, this is... this is... I'm not on that page. I got my own little recap.
Yes, I think that's it.
Right, so... so we hired a CPA. He wanted our power of attorney. We gave him the name of the corporation and our EIN number and address and all that, and it came back that we didn't exist. So his basic thing was, if you want me to continue with the audit, you need to get that straight. So that's when Carrie and I went searching for everything. We went down to... we had no records ourselves. City had no records, so we went to the bank, Horizon Bank. The only thing they had on file is they took a screenshot of their computer. And that's where... that's the only way we know that number exists.
The EIN.
Yes, the EIN. So for him to continue, he said, you need to file for a new one. He says it happens frequently, that numbers get lost and all that. So that's what I did, is I filed for a new tax EIN.
And that's the one you have listed here?
Yeah.
January 13.
Mm-hmm, right. So the next step that we did is, right off the bat, because we told him that, per the audit, we're a 501(c)(6). He says, "Where's all your tax returns?" We're 990s. We don't know. So he said, "Okay." He said... he sent another letter to the IRS. They came back and said, "There's no paperwork filed for a 501(c)(6), no tax returns done." We had no paperwork to prove that we had done it. So it's kind of like, "Okay, now what do we do?" So he suggested, and I thought it was a good idea, because researching Temple and Nolreville, state of Texas, everybody is a 501(c) something, besides just an EDC. So we looked at the difference between a 501(c)(6), which is a business association, a chamber of commerce, to a 501(c)(4), which is a, basically, a catch-all. It says it's a civic lead to further the general welfare of the people of the community. So based on our past projects, we're basically the parks and community center and wastewater solutions. We fit better under a 501(c)(4) than we do for a 6. So the EDC decided that, no matter where the cards fell, we were going to go ahead and file for a 4. So once we filed for the 4, that's when the IRS started attacking us. And they attacked us because, if you look at the rules, you have 60 days from formation to file that 501(c) whatever. And that was not done. That was 11 years late. So they hit us with a $5,000 penalty for not filing in a timely manner. So my... our CPA suggested three things. We did. Yes.
Can I just ask a clarification? Because I got a list here of 501(c)(3)'s, 4's, and 6's. And I noticed that on the 501(c)(6), they mention economic development corporations typically are under that, but on the 501(c)(4), it talks about civic entities like Lions Club, et cetera. Why would you choose to go to a...
Well, we went through a 4, because if you go past, you look at the civic... the civic improvements of a community. If you get even further deeper in the woods of what a 4 is versus a 6, it's business associations. You look at Temple, their focus is development, bringing in businesses. And that's what a 6 is, chamber of commerce, that's all businesses. You look at our history, our history is building parks. It's community-oriented. So we just thought the 4 was a better thing to go than a 6, you know? Six, what is that, were the sayings? Half a dozen, six, whatever. But we just liked the 4, our CPA said, because of our history, because, okay, now when we're filing the application, we have 11 years of history that we have to show. So we show all of our projects, our parks and this and that, and then we're trying to ask for a business association type of thing. It didn't quite fit, so the 4 was a better one.
I have a question on our resolutions, and maybe, Ophelia, you know this, but you know how we allocate part of the sales tax to EDC? Would the formation of the corporation be in the resolution where we're allocating the percentage sales tax to EDC? Would it say, "The city authorizes, you know, that we fund X amount of dollar to our EDC," which is a 501(c) whatever? I'm wondering if that's another source, because I'm hesitant on this. I don't want to be in violation of anything. So I don't want to violate the auditors, because they obviously had some piece of paper that said we were a 6, because they normally don't make that up, and then what about our...
Somebody could have just told them. That's what happened at the bank. Somebody just told them. It's a verbal thing.
I mean, I think it, obviously, before they did that single one, they used to do the EDC as a component for those first three or four years as a part of just the city audit. So, you know, whatever they had in their working paper, if that's however, like I said, so I mean, like I said, I'll put in my notes to email Dane in Leona tonight, or tomorrow, but...
What about a resolution?
Yeah, that's... I mean, we can check, but...
Okay, Ophelia, I don't know if you can... Well, we have to...
So the other...
What is the allocation of the tax on? Is that a resolution? Or is it...
That was voted... that was voted in by the people to allow that.
Right, right.
And Ophelia and I went through the resolutions to find anything that had to do with EDC. It was very slim, as far as what we could find.
So it wasn't listed what type of corporation it was?
No.
In the... okay.
Right, which, going through the IRS, we are a 501(c) A. That is the classification. Okay, included in packet...
Say that again, I'm sorry.
501... 501... I could put a C in there. 501(a). 501(a). And there's paperwork in there that Catherine asked for a determination letter on the City of Morgan's Point. It gives you what a governmental unit is, which basically is the city or the county, and then affiliates, affiliates of which one of them is an instrumentality. And that's what our Articles of Organization say, we are a public instrumentality. That's what our classification is, as far as the IRS goes. And a nonprofit for the state of Texas under Code 501 and 505. So I... when I read that a million times, I didn't pick up the word instrumentality. Since I'm not into the IRS, I didn't realize that was a classification. And so that took a lot of research on just that. So even if we find out we're a 501(c)(6), since nothing's been done, they've probably thrown it out anyway, because there's been no action done on it in 11 years. So even that's probably a moot point. So we'd be fined so much dollars a day for not filing 990 taxes on a 501(c)(6). So maybe we don't want to know we're a 6, to be honest. You know, it's... if you don't file, like, we were late in one of my groups. We were late by two weeks, and they fined us $500. So we're talking 11 years. So it's, you know, maybe not... that's not the pathway. We just bite the bullet. And anyway, our group decided that we wanted to be a 4. A lot of them are 3's. 3's are... limit you in what you can do. A 3 is for underserved communities. So if we wanted to do something down at the lake, that's not an underserved, so it would limit us. So that's why we mixed the 501(c)(3) idea, even though we can't write donations. But... so anyway. So to get our audit going again, we had to file for the new EIN. He said, "Let's take our chances, file the last three tax returns as a 990 for the 501(c)(4), see how it goes." So that's what we did. We filed the last three years of taxes. In the same time, we also applied for the 501(c)(4), along with the tax returns and the application, the letter that I wrote in there, asking for abatement on the penalties. So once we filed for the application, that's when we got the $5,000 hit for not filing in a timely manner. Once they got the tax returns, then they started... penalties on the time that we didn't file it. So that's when our tax now liability is up to over $15,000. So I've done the most that I can with researching. If we had not done anything with a 501(c)(6) and just been the instrumentality, 501(a), you still have to file a tax return. So somewhere along the line, the misunderstanding of a governmental unit and an affiliate of a governmental unit. We are an affiliate. And a governmental unit, a city, does not have to file tax returns. So that's just kind of... but an affiliate as a instrumentality, yes, you do have to file a 990T. So if that's all we were, and we stayed that, we forget all the 501(c)(4)'s and 6's, we stay an A, we're still going to be penalized for however many years for not filing that one tax return.
So I actually had this situation when I was treasurer of an athletic association for DISD at a high school.
Uh-huh.
And I got involved in it and found out, they started filing their tax returns, and then they quit. And part of it was, they went from a 990 EZ to a more... to a more full-blown report. And I guess nobody wanted to do it, but I mean, that was before I got there. So when I got there, I found out we hadn't done our tax returns. And I worked with the tax attorney. And, uh, we went ahead and refiled all years. I want to say there were six or seven of them. And then I wrote a letter to the IRS, and it was a high school. But I basically said, "Every penny we get for the athletic association goes to the students and the IRS. That's that much less money we have for uniforms." And, um, so you're just taking away money from the students. Attorney helped me write it, but he goes, "You got to go for the heartstrings."
Right.
So I don't know, and I said, "We're a complete volunteer organization. We're all volunteers from the standpoint of you get reappointed every few years. And so the turnover is by nature high. So with that, you lose historical information. And please, IRS, um, any money that we pay you is taken away from our parks and our residents. We're putting the money to good use, um, if you can forgive us."
Right. Well, I did the same thing on that $500. I said, "We have to sell an awful lot of 50 cent hot dogs to pay that $500," which was 30 years ago. So I understand that's heartstrings. And I've already spent, I can't tell you how many hours on the phone with the IRS, helping out with the CPA. We're to the point, we're the, to the point where now we're, uh, maybe in the next month, we should get a, um, a response. And so, our CPA said, "Okay, let's wait and see if this does the trick. If this doesn't," he says, "Then we'll go to bat again." But to be honest with.
Is the CPA a tax attorney?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes. Um. So anyway, I'm at the point to what I want to do, to be honest with you. So, if we have to start hiring CPAs and attorneys and all that, is it going to cost more money in the long run? You know, unless somebody else, and I've asked my EDC people, "Do you guys want to sit and talk on the phone?" Not one hand was raised. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. We're, we want to wait and find out what they say. The letter basically said, "It was not our intention to file for a 501(c)(4). We were going to stay what we wanted to stay." Um, and it was a misunderstanding of which government entity has to file a tax return and which one doesn't. So it was totally a misunderstanding, um, having no paperwork as backup. That's what's killing us. And, um.
Linda, I just have a.
Sure.
I, I can feel, I feel your pain.
Feel my pain.
Me too, me too. I'm looking at this.
It's a nightmare. But 2011 wasn't that long ago. Certainly, there's some people still alive who.
I've talked to the people that were mentioned in the minutes, so here's another issue.
Okay.
So I have talked to people and memories are like, "I don't know. I wasn't involved in that." I cannot find who wrote the Articles of Organization. It's signed by the past mayor, and I talked to him. And he didn't remember anything. I talked to Tom Edwards, who's been the president for the last 11, 10 years. He says, "I wasn't part of that." He says, "I wasn't part of it. I don't know." I, I did talk.
So we are where we are.
We are where we are. I actually ta, called Neil and talked to him. And he basically said, a couple of things. He said, "I have no paperwork in Morgans Point folder, because all I was hired to do was to facilitate the meeting, get everybody going. I advised everybody to look into the EDC handbook and what was required." And that was kind of the end of his portion of it. And, um, his comment also was, he's, he said, "I don't understand why the EDC got an EIN in the first place, because they're an affiliate of the governmental unit and the, the city council, the city has all authority, the governing body of the EDC." So, the money was commingled. The, the treasures was done, the secretary, so everything was done in-house with the city. So he couldn't understand why the EDC split in the first place. But if you look at any corporation, um, you got to get an EIN number. So that was, if it was never filed, which that's kind of what I picked up, because it was all done through the city, that probably it had not been asked for until they got a new bank account. And then we don't know where they got that number.
So technically, we may not have been an EDC this whole time.
No, no, we are in good shape with the state of Texas. They, we, they love our forms, they love our tax returns. We're in good shape. We have a couple of things that I need to follow up on that as well. When I tried to change the registered agent, I would send off nonprofit paperwork and they'd send it back. "Yeah, we know it says 25 bucks for nonprofit, but you're not a nonprofit. Send us 50." And other things is, "No, you can't use this form." When I was trying to change the regis, uh, residency. Um, "No, I know this says nonprofit corporation, but that's not you. You need to do, follow these other code directions." So we had to refile that. So we're kind of like this oddity. You know, we don't follow in any of it. And, um, another thing is, the Secretary of State, when it comes back with the classification, because for some reason, the EDC was filing eminent domain forms. That got filed incorrectly as well. I think they filed it as the city, because that's the codes they use on it. And the EDC is, is, in the ordinance says, "We do not have any power of eminent domain." So we should not have been filing that. Then another thing came back, and it classifies us as an industrial development corporation. You go back to an industrial development corporation, that is something that's filed as a enterprise zone. So it's not an, it's totally different. So maybe that's why it keeps kicking us out, as far as the form, some of the forms that we're filing. I don't know. So that's another thing that I got to follow up on. But, um, it's, this is complicated. It's really complicated, because it does not follow typical nonprofits.
So Linda, with this, with, um, with this train wreck, um, moving forward, it seems to me like, from what I'm hearing, we're kind of in a holding pattern until we start getting some information back from big brother up there. So, we're, what, what courses of action do you anticipate and what do you need from us?
Okay.
What, what can we do for you?
Two things, two things. So either, if they come back and say, "Yes, you owe the 15,000." Two things I would ask. Go down Dorothy's way and see if somebody will do the research for us that knows more than what I do. Or assistance in paying the bill.
So, hypothetically, um, since, from what I'm hearing, we can try to research all this documentation and go back and dig through, we can go look under the pool. Maybe it's under the pool. I don't know. My, yeah, that's where Hoff is. My, my question is, do we realistic think, realistically think we're going to find something? Okay, so you kind of answered the question. So, your hunch is that we're going to be looking, basically, starting scratch? Let's, let's pay the 15 grand and move forward from there. That's kind of what I'm hearing? Okay.
And like I said, unless somebody want, can plead the case better than me, because the idea of the school kids or the hot dog sales is different than, "I get half a percent of sales tax and I do nothing for it." It's kind of hard to prove hardship on that, I think, the heartstrings of it, other than, we're, all we're doing is wasting taxpayers' money to pay off.
So. Mr. Mayor, just since you have more experience, obviously, than the five of us, just kind of brainstorming and, and gaming it. I mean, I, I think absolutely that's the way we want to go if we can, you know, do the heartstrings thing to, yeah, to move on and save that money. I guess my question is, do we think honestly that a letter, I mean, who's going to write a letter for us? Um, our citizens, yeah, our attorney, us, a letter from us saying, you know, "Please don't, please, uh, can I have some more?" kind of thing. So I, I don't know. I guess I'm just trying to shape this realistically in my head. What, what is our expectation management here? And just so I know, probably in 60, 90 days, we're going to see your smiling face up there again going, "Hey."
Yep, they hit us.
Okay.
What is, what is our, what is our worst-case scenario? Are we at 15 grand? Is that our worst-case scenario?
Yes.
So if, if the letter that we worked from our attorney, the worst-case scenario, I mean, we're, we've got, that's, we've got two choices. We do that and then do the 15, and y'all have money. You, you have the money to pay the.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's 72,000 in the bank. Giving you another 60, right.
Yeah, but maybe we can split it or something. Maybe we, maybe it's, who knows?
It really is an obligation of the EDC. It's not an obligation of the city.
It's not. It really isn't.
It's a separate corporation.
I, I back up on that.
Okay.
The city council people, they were all on the EDC. They were at every meeting. So, I think the city needs to take some responsibility for not getting this started on the right.
Well, we are funded. So we're taking full responsibility for EDC to the tune of $60,000 a year. So if you want to walk through your work plan.
Actually, the citizens of Morgans Point.
Right, right.
Yes.
But it's coming out of our sales tax. Right, the city sales tax, yeah.
And the reason why it was formed is because there's a lot of things that a EDC can do that the city council's, um, hands are tied. Right. So that's the reason why it was formed to begin with. So I, we don't need to spend it on either hand.
Can we, can we hear, in the workshop, can we hear comments from any citizens who may be aware of these things?
Yeah, Andrea wanted to speak, Dennis.
Dennis, is it okay if Andrea speaks?
Nobody will hear you if you don't use the mic.
Okay, it's just a workshop. Okay, well, because we, maybe she's been here a long time.
Well, the first thing I want to say, it's quite a mess due to no documents. And what I noticed, the EDC has not posted any minutes. Somehow, Ophelia, excuse me. I'm talking now. Now, the EDC, I remember when it was funded, uh, when it was formed. And it was formed, I was not participating in formation, but it was formed as an instrumentality. It was, it was formed as an instrumentality of the city, like she said. And the reason was, I think Tom Edwards brought it about, he wanted to do something with the parks, if you remember that. Um, because the city never has enough money. So if we form an EDC somehow, that was, to my understanding, the idea. There's, um, money involved, because then the city is permitted to levy an additional sales tax with voter approval to fund the EDC. And the original intention was improve the parks, make Morgans Point more livable for its citizens. And then, well, I guess then it got a little bit out of hand and documents were lost. And then all of a sudden, we have sailboats and cottages and trolleys driving around in Morgans Point and business coming here over the years, or something like that. How that happened, I do not know. But I do remember how it was founded, because my husband was, then shortly afterwards, a member for a very short time. And I do remember my husband coming back from a workshop where the state of Texas informed them. Um, and I think Mayor Green was a member back then too. You remember a very long time. You know probably much more than I know just by hearing. And I've never heard any, I've never heard anything negative about you, just to say that. So, I looked that up. This is what an EDC can do, and this is, um, B. An EDC can level taxes, and then they are, because we are B, these taxes have to be used for certain things, and I highlighted it for you. Um, if you go to page, um.
Three.
Uh, look at there, what somehow says something. My, my own call. On page three. Um, so they can help build streets, all kinds of things, try to attract business. Um, and they can also promote sports, anything that's kind of better for the community. Now, then at one point, the EDC somehow wanted to be financially independent too. I do remember that. I do not remember how they went about to do that. I don't think I will ever find out. But, um, what came to my attention is that supposedly it was a 501(c)(6), which, um, I have for you up here. And then supposedly, now it's going to be a 501(c)(4). I have a very strong concern about a 501(c)(4). A 501(c)(4), well, it's called itself a social welfare organization. I don't know if anybody's watching politics whatsoever. But if you remember the lawsuit against Citizen United or by Citizen United, where a nonprofit is now allowed to sponsor political candidates, that donations don't have to be disclosed. Well, that's what a 501(c)(4) may do. And I do not think it is legal. Well, most likely not, since an EDC may only do the things in here. There's no political action mentioned or sponsoring a candidate whatsoever. If it's not legal, well, it's at least not ethical. I looked further into 501-whatever, because there are so many. There are more than just these three versions. There are many, many, many more. But, uh, an EDC, if they would want to be a 501-something, a nonprofit, they actually would qualify at a 501(c)(3), a charity. Charity through the best, that's how it's called. Then they can get our sales taxes, tax payer money. And then they can do the following, which you will find up here. This is from some sort of tax for your company. Um, they can erect or maintain public buildings, monuments, works, lessening the burdens of the government, basically. City of Morgans Point doesn't have a lot of money. They don't have it to. Maybe waste on parks instead of streets. City of Morgans Point can apply for grants. I'm not quite sure about if the 501, I didn't look that up, because I'm not really that much into grants. If a 501(c)(3)(3) may do that, but the city could apply for grants also. Uh, or maybe somehow through the EDC. This is actually all I want to say about this whole EDC mess. Another comment I would like to make, I think the EDC has its own money. The EDC doesn't apparently spend its money wisely all the time.
Ms. Hankins, we need to, we need to bring it up, okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking now. I'm sorry. There is no time.
We got a timeframe, ma'am, please, please.
Did I have two minutes? Did somebody say you have two minutes?
You said you were close, so.
I'm, I'm close to close. Yes, I'm close to close. I do not think, sure. I think from the EDC, it is, how shall I say? It's fiscally imprudent, and that is mildly spoken, to pro, propose a budget and not considering a $15,000 fine. To propose a budget that's 97% funded with tax payer money and not consider a $50,000 fine that they most likely will have to pay. And then come crawling to the city and ask them, "Oh, why don't you help us pay the fine?" Because I happened not to be a member of the C, of the EDC at that time. I think the city of Morgans Point is responsible, responsible for what happened before you guys were councilmen. So that does not absolve the EDC now, just because Linda is the councilwoman and happened to find it out. That's actually all I want to say. I could say much more, but since.
Thank you for all your research.
Thank you for your input.
Yes, thank you.
So, one comment on the 501(c)(4). Yes, it does allow political. We had to actually clarify in our application that we would not do anything that was political. So that's in our application. So that's a protection there. We understood it.
No, ma'am, we're done. We, your comments, we're, we're.
A point of order here, sir. If we're in a work program, if this is a stu, just a working group, this is a workshop, why are we limiting public in, input? Then, under the normal rules of a, of a.
Don't let them speak three minutes.
But is that, is that part of a workshop also? Do we have that in our description of what a workshop can do and not do?
Well, why don't we ask Neil when he gets here? So then we can actually have some rules to call. Because my guess is, it probably should be a public comment at the very beginning, no different than a meeting, that they, they can have their three minutes at the very beginning, and then they're done. And it's not a back and forth. But like I said, let's, let's ask Neil.
Is that what we want? Is that how you get public input?
Well, I think for me, Andrea did a lot of research. And she sent it to us last week, maybe, or some of us. And so I've plowed through it, and it was very helpful. It was very informative. And so, um, I just wanted to make sure you guys had the benefit of her research.
Yeah, I think you did a fantastic job. And, Dennis, my whole point is, if we're going to make this a workshop and not a, a formal council meeting, I, I, I did not see anywhere where we're limiting public input.
It goes, it goes back to the original intent of the workshop. The workshop was for council members to discuss items on the agenda that were going to be needed more conversation or discussion points and stuff like this. So the original intent was, this was a workshop for council members. So, you know, obviously, we had this idea before the sweep election and anything. But that, the intent was to allow y'all to discuss between council members, so.
We have on our agenda at some. We have on our agenda at some point, I don't know the month, but that we were going to look at our agenda procedures and protocol. And so, can we just do that all at the same time with whatever workshop is set aside to talk about our agendas and the minutes and protocol?
I didn't want to, I didn't want to stop citizens' comments. I just wanted to limit them to three minutes, so they could make a comment, so we could proceed with the, with the workshop. We got a lot of stuff to cover yet. So, I didn't want to cut anybody off, I mean, not let anybody speak, but I wanted to limit it to a number of times, like we do on a council meeting.
My point is, if we're going to discuss this amongst ourselves, and somebody's done all that research and brought it in, you know, thank you. You saved a whole lot of, you saved a whole lot for us, and you clarified a lot of things.
Mayor, I want to ask you, and to my question, you had a statement, you said that some of the things, they don't use the power to have, and one point, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for putting that in my case.
Dennis, I think we have someone else that wants to.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's obvious. We have the rules for the city council meeting, but I didn't know we had that same time limit type thing for a workshop, because a workshop is supposed to be more informal, is what I thought. Yeah, like a town hall.
Can we, can we talk about that at a workshop that is set aside for that purpose? And we'll just bring up the, the points. Linda, is there anything else? Did you want to walk us through your work plan? Or do you want to do that at the council meeting?
Um.
We're not going to do the council. We're going to try to get it all.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll try to get it all here.
You want to go ahead and walk us through your work plan, then?
Right, right. So, just one comment on the, as you are learning that you are going to reap the rewards of what happened prior to you, and you've got to pay the piper, if the EDC has to do the same, you know, it's coming out of Morgan's Point's pocket. So, whether it's that one or this one, so.
It's a, it's painful.
It's painful.
We've been feeling that same pain in being bashed, you know, of mistakes that were no fault of ours.
That's right. That's right.
We are where we are, and we need to move forward with a reasonable plan to move forward. Yeah.
So, and, and we have that $15,000 in our budget for this year to pay the bill.
So, that, you should probably pay the bill, then.
We probably will. We probably will. So, okay, so.
Do you want to walk us through the work plan? Or is council supposed to approve?
Yes.
The EDC work plan? So, once we, this is like the budget, I guess, once we approve EDC's work plan, they're going to go work it.
Hopefully, hopefully. So, it's been a long year trying to figure out where we're at. And of course, I can't find it. It's basically, the work plan is what I mentioned.
The one you want?
Yeah. It's, it's our.
You can put mine if you want to, and I'll, I'll look on with Jimbo.
Yeah, and it's on.
What's in my books?
It's on page 35 of, okay.
So, we are looking at commercial property development, which we're working with HDL companies. They're doing an industry analysis, basically telling us what our gap is for our residents, how far they have to go for cleaners or that type of thing. We're looking at maximizing city assets. We've got quite a few, specifically the 35 acres. Maybe there is something that we can do out there that keeps us an outside community, that keeps us back to nature, nature-based businesses. Doesn't have to be a brick and mortar business to come in and bring us.
What's the 35 acres? I'm sorry.
35, the pit.
Oh, okay. I'm, I didn't.
Yes. So, the 35 acres out there is a beautiful piece of property. You're not having to combine a bunch of property owners to work together. But just because you say you're bringing in business, it's not a brick and mortar. It's not a Walmart. So, there's a lot of ways to bring in to income, whether it's through rentals, through ticket sales, like you say. It could be an event. It could be a tournament, that kind of thing. And we've got 35 acres that's just sitting there. So, we're also looking.
Would that be a part of the Temple Master Plan, though? I thought the Master Plan included the pit.
Yes. And so, what it is, the Master Plan is going to come through a, kind of a general idea. And then, we start fine tuning with what businesses, if we do an outdoor community, is it kayak rentals, is it boat rentals, that type of thing.
Okay, so we're going to wait for.
You know.
Temple Master Plan to.
Hiking shoes, you know.
Before we move forward on that, then? That's what I'm hearing?
On the HDL?
Was that the industry analysis that you said?
We have, the HDL did a, basically a business analysis. And we're taking that information and passing that on to Texas A&amp;M. So, they're coming through with working on a more specific idea planned for us.
Okay, so, yeah, I was in maximize city assets.
That, that one is an industry analysis. Like you say, if we, we become an outdoor business type of thing. Also, looking at architectural and landscape until people see what it's going to look like, you know, it's kind of hard to approve or disapprove. So, we're looking at that. My favorite, as I mentioned, is we're looking at a young entrepreneur project. Perhaps we don't bring in a whole lot of businesses, but there is ways for us to create future business people. And Morgan's Point would be a perfect place for it. I met with Temple ISD last week, and they are on board. They are, they, I mentioned Maker Places.
Temple or Belton?
Belton. Sorry, did I say Temple?
You did.
Sorry. Belton, Belton. And talked to them, and they are on board. And when I mentioned the Maker Spaces, they just lit up, because they've already got something started. They just need a place for the kids to invent and create. So, that's one thing we're looking at. And like I said, this outdoor recreation, is there something that we can bring prosperity and something that's good for our people? Also, pop-up markets and some kind of revenue, diversification, diversification. Maybe we bring in tournaments, that type of thing. It's all temporary, seasonal, and mobile. So, we don't have to build a building to bring in.
Can I pop back real quick?
Sure.
I just wanted to give you some praise. The pop-up market over at, on the corner.
Uh-huh. The Two Lakes?
It's been awesome.
Thank you. And we're, we're trying to improve it.
It's starting to grow, and it's really, and it's cooler.
Yes. Yes. Their garden, their crops have cooked on the vine.
Yeah.
So, so that, looking at some diversification, community outreach. I know the city is looking at that, and EDC feels it's the same way. If we say business development, it's like the bad guy. So, if we can go out and paint a picture of what it could be, that it's not going to change our lifestyle too much, because it's already happening. So, we're looking at that. We're also, the risk management policy, because of the problem we, we inherited with no paperwork, can't find anything. So, we're looking at doing that. And then, of course, our annual report to the city council.
Okay.
Which we promised.
Could you, could you just expand, just for my curiosity, on that young person's entrepreneur projects? What's, what is that going to look like?
Okay, so, our initial idea is that we are going to bring in a group of probably seven people. One is already signed on from Belton ISD, and then also EDC and whoever, business owner, whoever. And they will come up with a concept. And our initial concept is that we will ha, we will find, we will form cohorts of students. And the first cohort will actually fi, form a 501(c)(3). So, they would be the three. And they would actually have, we would have junior achievement-type programs, how to write a business plan, all of that stuff. And bringing it towards Morgan's Point will be, kids come up with an idea to solve a problem that Morgan's Point has. Whether it is transportation for employees to get to backyard barbecue, that is one of their hardest things they have to do, to be in Morgan's Point in business. They cannot get workers into town. So, that's kind of our initial thing. And as each, maybe six months go, you form another cohort, some graduate, others come in. Then, the graduating kids can form onto the original board of directors that's just kind of directing the project.
Do we have a sponsor at the high school that will sponsor the program with us?
The superintendent.
Oh, su, oh.
Matt Smith, yes.
Oh, fantastic.
Yes. He, he shook hands on it.
So, have, again, this is chasing a rabbit, because we're not there yet. Like, CTSOs, there's an organization called SCSA that basically already does this.
Right, which you do, I think.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, that would be a resource that might need to be.
Right, right. And we want it to be a standalone 501(c)(3). We don't want to be tied to Morgan's Point or Temple or BL, BISD. BSID, whatever. Whatever. We want it to be a standalone corporation. We want it to be an organization for the kids, by the kids.
Yeah, I actually sat in on that presentation.
It did.
And it was, it was pretty amazing. And the thing that, that impressed me about it was the school board, BISD, they just, I mean, they jumped at it. It's like, when, when she says they lit up, they lit up. It was pretty amazing, just the, the response and the reaction they got. And watching their wheels turn, I think they actually described it almost as a, a junior business-oriented shark tank.
Yes.
Where, you know, if, if that makes it, it made it easier for me to understand, because I'm sitting there going, I don't know what the hell you're talking about. But so, and, and when they, I mean, they, they actually got up and they started going crazy with crayons on the wall and drawing all kinds of good stuff. So, they are super excited about it. And the thing that I appreciated, talking about TISD and everything that they have going on, was it was abundantly clear that this is kind of the first step, and it, like Dennis said, it is not autonomous to NPR. It is not autonomous to BISD. Once the program kind of takes root, it's going to start running to other, yeah, so, which I think is awesome for these kids these days, because I think we all know that a lot of our students, a lot of our kids, just don't have the skill set to, to function in business. So, I think it's awesome.
So, a couple other things on that, is that I made the comment of a Maker Space. And that's when they really lit up, because Morgan's Point could be the perfect place. Like I say, we don't have a lot of buildings, but we can create places for the kids to come together. The room at the library, you know, and it could be STEM-oriented kids, can be artists, it can be anybody. But if we can find at the church, if they've got a spare room, that we can bring the kids in. So, they, they are really excited about that, because that's something they don't have at the school. So, it's in, it's in theory, they do have a coffee shop, but that's as far as it goes. So, if we could bring it forward. So, anyway, that's, to me, it's an exciting thing to do, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Curious. 35 acres by the pit. What, what kind of ideas do you have? Can you throw any out or not yet?
To be honest, what I would love to see, I would love to see a grass pavilion outdoor theater. I would like to see pathways, walking around a beautiful little place to sit by and, and enjoy nature. Maybe you would have a couple little mobile businesses. This would be to start. If we're totally against bringing any kind of brick and mortar, you know, make it temporary.
Like a park-like setting?
Like a park-like setting, a place to gather. I think that was one of my business guys that, he said his dream for Morgan's Point was to build a place for people to gather. And we don't really have that. Community center's small. So, and we're outgrowing it.
But it is air conditioned.
And it looks like you've done a lot of work, and we certainly appreciate it. It's, I know you've had some issues to overcome and good luck.
And I, that's minor. To me, that's minor. I just hate seeing, I hate paying the IRS. So, we can get through it. And I, I think we're on a good path and, and.
And I know you're limited on your income, because we can't get anything besides sales tax. So, unless.
Well, we can.
The citizens spend more, we can't get more in our.
Actually, we cannot run a business, but we can earn income through ticket sales, rentals, that type of thing.
Right.
So, that was my idea, is if maybe we could do something that we can get ticket sales or whatever.
So, one, one last thing about the young entrepreneurs, because I just texted one of my friends. Normally, I don't text during our meetings.
See, it's exciting, isn't it?
Well, because one of my friends is doing something like this, and they went to Dallas to participate in a Young Entrepreneurs thing. So, there's a website I want you to look at. It's called YoungEntrepreneursMarket.com. And it is essentially an organization that hosts craft shows, if you will, but it's young entrepreneurs. And they did it this summer. My friend's kid went and did it. They didn't sell a lot of stuff, but it was a great experience for them. And they, you have to, you know, do your business plan and all, all of those steps. So.
Junior Achievement down in Austin?
It's children's, I'm sorry, it's Children's Entrepreneur Market.
Okay. Because Junior Achievement has got a wonderful program. Closest one is Austin. So, if we could get something going in central Texas, workforce has got some, the wingspan program.
So, Linda, I have another question before you leave.
Thank you.
I have another question before you leave. I'm sorry. You, you presented this budget to us. Is that similar to what we had last year?
It's more generalized. It's generalized. The topics are about the same. I mean, the categories are about the same. The entrepreneur and events, and then new diversity-type, diversification-type ideas.
And did you guys help with the fireworks at all last year with?
Yes, I did. I, I started a business network two years ago, because it was an incubator project of the EDC. And Mark, wherever he is, Mark helped me get that going. So, my biggest challenge was to get a business directory. And so, part of the EDC's goals was to bring in food trucks. So, somehow I got elected, and I was setting up food trucks. So, and that's kind of where the farmer's market came from, is that I had one food truck that wanted to set up. And then, I asked her, I said, hey, do you want to take this on as a chairman, basically? And she said, sure. Because they lose places to sell after Salado closes and Colleen's closes in August, September. And they, their crops are good until the end of the year.
And don't forget the cardboard recycle program, which is a major success, I think, in our city.
That was, that came about by the business network, because I asked our businesses, I said, what keeps you up at night? Backyard barbecue told me cardboard.
Could be worse.
That's now what keeps me up.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate everything. I know you're on call if we need you. We thank you very much.
So, basically, I've got this, the budget, the work plan, Terry Hera, I think that's the three.
I know you'll be here, but we won't ask you to do this again in a regular meeting, okay? Moving right along, but what is the next thing you'd like to look at?
You want to look at Parks and Rec? You want to look at Parks and Rec?
You're going to do that? Just look at it.
Yep. Let's do that.
I sent this around, but I also just brought a copy. This is the application that we talked about. So, this is maybe getting some new blood in, helping with our garden rec. So, Roxanne did the EDC application, so I picked that one. And then, I also called Linda Maris, and I asked Linda for the EDC application. So, I plagiarized and basically came up with this application. The front is kind of a synopsis of our ordinance of the establishment of Parks and Rec, which kind of tells you, if you're going to join this group, you know, there's going to be seven of you, and who's leading it, and selection of your officers, the terms that they would serve. So, really just communicating to those people that are interested, kind of what you're getting into. Then, the application itself, I, we just need to decide, number one, how we're going to market it. And I'm assuming Esther will do the marketing of the application. But also, who, who do they send the application to? Who do we want to be the filter? And what date do we want it back?
What you think, once we appoint any chairman, have it sent to him or her?
Yep.
Okay, we can do that.
I mean, I would think that would be, be the most logical of a thing.
Okay, great. I was thinking the city secretary, and that way she could, and that way she could accumulate them all. And then, certainly, if we appoint Stephen, Stephen can go through them all. But I was thinking of, you know, like, it just go to city hall. Make it official.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we have those fabulous boxes. So, if, I mean, it makes sense to me to drive it through city hall to the chairman, who will then, you know, kind of report back.
But into.
I hate to say report back, but bring it back to us. So, that's kind of my, my thought process.
Okay, this is very basic. Name, address, phone number, email, how long you've lived in the city, why do you want to join Parks and Rec, and which of your skills would be most beneficial to the committee. So, if you want to change it, this is just a draft for discussion.
I mean, it can be adjusted. I mean, we don't have to approve this. It can be adjusted anytime if you want to add something to it. It can be adjusted anytime if you want to add something to it, whatever.
It could be part of the ordinance, wouldn't it?
Because we're, we're voting on the ordinance tonight.
I don't know what the application is.
I don't know.
Um, I mean, I, I think tonight, when, when we get it rolling, um, with the assumption being that we're all going to move forward with this, this is a start. And I think, like everything, we need to get started somewhere. So, you know, my thought is we start with this and if there's an issue with it, then we can come back and readjust it. I mean, it's...
Adjust this to where, for any committee or any, any, anything other than Parks and Rec.
I mean, it's pretty cut and dry, which is what I like. I don't care that you like long walks on the beach and you're a cancer, that's your business, but this is, this works for me. Thank you.
Dorothy, did I cover your deal on the parks?
I think so. We're going to approve the ordinance, we're going to appoint a chair, and then we just need to approve the application. I think that's all we need to do and then establish the procedures for the applications to be submitted with some timeframes.
And the ordinance, I guess we can go over during the real, the actual meeting. So, people, anybody who is not attending the workshop will hear the ordinance when we go over it, and I think that will help promote too.
Does anybody else have something that they want to discuss? Um, we could do staggered terms.
We're going to break at about a quarter till, if somebody has a chance to go to, do, get something to drink or whatever, a little rest and meet the public when they come in. So, at about 5:45, we're going to adjourn, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, it, for me, if you're asking, everything else is pretty cut and dry for me. I, I have no issues. I mean, obviously willing to discuss, continue moving forward, but, um...
Or we can adjourn right now and y'all can mingle.
Yeah, we can.
Whatever you want to do.
I just want to say, on the roads, it's the same thing. We want to go over all the roads while the whole community is here to listen to what we thought about. So, I think, our meeting.
I, I, and I actually, Dalton had discussed it back when we had that pre-election workshop where, you know, that he had gotten an engineering of probable cost from our engineers to do Sherwood.
Okay.
And so, basically, just as a frame of reference, I printed out the EOPC and kind of the design, you know, what they thought that, that that would tackle. So, because when we start talking about all the roads that y'all have listed, you know, this is at least going to give you a framework of what, you know, one section would cost. So, because depending on what y'all decide, RFPs and stuff like this, it's going to be really, it seems like y'all want it vague, but with alternates or anything like this, so I, you can look at this in the next however many minutes and if we got questions, we can talk about it.
We'll look at it. That sounds good.
Yeah, and the number I've had in the back of my mind, um, and I can't remember which consultant said this, but it's about $260,000 to do one mile of a road. And, so...
That would be to mill and overlay.
Mill, yeah, mill and overlay, I'm sorry. Like, to complete that road. Redo it, I guess.
Yeah, and that's just...
Rein it up and put it back down.
If you go on the high end, then this will give you, obviously, hopefully, hopefully we'll find some honest vendors that don't just try to sell the two-minute mill and overlay on everyone, but, you know, you're going to have to trust your vendors since we don't have anything to guide them in the process.
Well, and one thing I, we, we'll talk about this too, but I think with the RFPs, if we got three vendors and they all came up with way different ideas, then we know we got to, we have to start over.
Mr. Hankins would like to say something, and I'm, I'm going to give him, give him his opportunity here.
I used to be on the EDC and I went to the training in Austin with Tom Edwards. So, I thought I, since you can't find any history on it. From what I remember, the EDC was started because it was required to get the sales tax money. And the EDC was always a part of a city and because it was sales tax money, there was no tax on the tax. I was also the treasurer from the Temple Amateur Radio Club for several years and I filed the 990 forms. And to make sure I was doing it right, I called the IRS and she said, as long as you're spending the money only on the club and you're not selling anything, we just had to send in how much money we took in. And that was it. If you want to find out anything about the history, you have to contact whoever gave you permission to get the portion of the sales tax, and that's probably the only place to find any paperwork. I was president of the Junior Achievement Company and we had sponsors by companies. I was the President of United Artistic Achievers. Our sponsor was the United Telephone Company and we sold stock and we sold garbage bags, which were called lawn and leaf bags, because they weren't sold in stores at them, and we made a 6% profit.
All right.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anything else y'all want to look at?
Carrie, since you're in the hot seat tonight, you have anything that you want to address beforehand to... Not really. I know I just put you on the spot again, but...
No, I mean, really, I, I think most of the other stuff is pretty straightforward for, at least from my seat, so...
In that case, I was going to say, this will terminate or this will end the workshop and we're still here, so we can mingle. And we're, we've already hosted this as an open meeting, so we can talk. And, uh, and we, we can talk.
Yeah, we can open it up if, uh...
Yeah, we each got one.
So, this is the million dollars. This is, um...
Thanks for everybody being here tonight. I guess this was the coolest spot in town, so welcome to Morgan's Point. And appreciate you brave in the heat coming out to see us. I'm gonna call this to order in about a minute, so I just want to give everybody a chance to sit down or get water or use restroom or whatever, and I'll call this to order here in about a minute and a half. Also, if you do want to make a comment, please sign up at our register if you have not already done so. I'd appreciate it. Okay, it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this to order. We're gonna start off with Lucas Abel is our Boy Scout. He's gonna lead us to the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. So if everybody will please stand at this time. Lucas, it's all yours.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the black United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God. Texas is black. Pledge of allegiance to the integrity of our state.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, sir. You have a good day. At this time, as usual, this is the opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest, with the presentation limited to please three minutes. All speakers will conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking and will announce their name and address to be included in the minutes. State law prohibits the mayor and members of city council from commenting on any statement or engaging in dialogue without appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the state open meetings law. So not that we want to, not to talk to you, we just can't. So anyway, starting with that, first one on the agenda is Althea. Althea used to be our city secretary, then she got smart.
We can share. Good to see you.
Althea, speaking to the microphone.
Do I need to start over?
You're good.
I'm good, okay. As a manpower employee, Andrew conducted the interview and started me on the job the same day as a billing clerk for the water department. He baptized me with fire. He put me in the office, gave me the tools to use, and let me self-taught myself, which was good because it helped me learn. He not only stopped there, I had to learn court. I had to learn how to run the front office's duty, all the duties of the front office, maintenance fees, billing permits, and all of that stuff. So eventually Andrew decided he wanted to gain employment in the city of Bartlett, so he left. At the time Stacy Hitchman moved me into the water management department. During that time as water manager, I had a lot of clerks come through up under my supervision. And I would like to recognize Catrice Jackson, because she's still here. And she's still a dedicated employee. And she's still serving the city. So in the year 2012, the city hired an intern city manager. His name was Olin Petty, rest in peace, Olin, because he passed away, to come and straighten out things with the city. This is after Stacy left. He decided to place me in the city secretary's office. I had no experience in this office. I didn't know what I was doing. I was just thrown in there, nobody didn't train me to do anything. So I worked for Mr. Petty until he presented the city manager to the council, which they hired David Huesman. So once David Huesman came on board, and we both started our positions at the same time, he was city manager and I was city secretary. And Mr. Huesman would teach all the department heads how to look for employees, how to hire people, and what to look for. And so he began to let us do that. And so several people that we've hired, they're still here, like guys in the water department and maintenance department, we've hired there. And so Mr. Huesman also introduced me to the Texas municipal clerks. That's a group of city secretaries all over the state of Texas. They all get together and conduct classes, seminars, and you're able to get your certification through that group. They have four courses, and they have four subjects in these courses that you must complete in order to be a city secretary. But you could be a city secretary and get that training through that group. And that's the only way I made it, from elections and everything else. They would come to the city and do elections for me. So I started the city certification program, but I didn't get to finish it. Camille was my last hire for city hall. And my conversations with Camille about the program, the city secretary program, and I was here to, and really happy to hear that she was already involved and already doing some of the work. And sometime I would come and visit and check on the girls and make sure that they were happy.
Althea, moving a little bit.
Gotta hurry up? Okay, so this is my mama son. So a city manager's job, and I think what Dalton is trying to do is take care of his people. His job is to report to the mayor and council about those employees' accomplishments at budget time. You must trust that he did his homework. We always want to recognize good and faithful employees so that they will stay and dedicate their careers to the city. Please don't move the employees backwards. This has been years of scratching and digging to get where they are now. Surrounding cities are paying their employees a competitive salary that keeps up with the market because they realize that those employees could move and go somewhere else. I took pride in the office of city secretary. I tried to grasp every part of that position. The teams you have working for the city are great people. Don't expect for them to live off of pennies. I listened to the budget meeting on August the 7th, 2023, and was very disappointed in the way the council perceived staff. I thought in meetings we should not mention staff by name, but by position. I think the city has always been run different, been run by different council members with agendas instead of what is best for the city. In 2019, we warned the mayor and council about a faulty city manager and not the current city manager. Yes, I was pushed out. I had to walk away with grace for my position and career and to keep my retirement. Every day, Mr. Solis would show up for work and make sure that I knew my job was in jeopardy.
Althea, we gotta move, please?
So anyway, I've always said finance is the heart of the city, and I hope everyone elsewhere will agree.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for your service to the city, appreciate that very much. Next on the list, Misty?
My name is Misty Ballard, and I live at Two Admiral Circle. And I told somebody earlier I should drink a lot more before I get up here because I get really nervous talking in front of y'all. So I would like to quit doing it at some point. But I have two things that I would like to talk about. The first, I actually wanted just to talk about something that happened last month. And y'all probably realize that something went wrong. Last month, and I don't know her very well, so hopefully she doesn't hate me after this, there was a letter read up here to the city council in reference to something that was voted on, and she was not happy with it. She read the letter eloquently, wonderfully, and respectfully, and y'all responded, which it shouldn't have. Not only should you have not responded, but some of y'all responded inappropriately. This right here is a citizen talking stick. You're voted in there, so you get a vote. You get to decide on our laws. You get to decide on the things that we get to do. And here, we get to say what we want. We do it decently, we do it respectfully, and you don't respond. Because when you do that, you take away our safety to talk. You take away our safety to say what it is that we need to say to you so we know what it is that you want us to do. It's a two-way street. I'm nervous and frustrated. That's what I wanted to talk about. Now, when I get done talking, as far as I know, this is not something for y'all to respond to, although I really do think y'all owe her an apology. So, that being said, also, on top of that, she works her ass off. I just want to point that out. She shows up at all the events, even the events that she is not volunteering at. She puts in the hours to the city. She has put in more hours to the city than most of us that see y'all on city council. She has worked her butt off. Don't be mean to her no more, that's just not nice, I'm just saying. Then, I was already pissed off about that, so I didn't want to watch the budget. Then, I was already pissed off about that, so I didn't want to watch the budget. I don't know a whole lot about budget, but I did watch yesterday's presentation, I guess. I want to say fiasco. I will say, the first 30 minutes were volatile. I don't understand what's going on. I will say, I said it from the beginning, I don't know Dalton super well, one-to-one, but I watch, I see the way he is with the employees, I see how much they respect him, I see how comfortable he is. So I don't understand why y'all want to push him out so bad, because that's what it looks like. That, and on top of that, I don't know if your bottom line is the money, so the citizens are going to look at it and they're going to say at the end of the year that you saved this much money. You don't do it on the backs of the people that are working in the city. You don't do it by eliminating their positions as soon as you get in here your first 90 days. And you sure as shit don't do it by not bringing up their pay when they deserve more. You don't take a position and put a woman in a position that now covers two positions and say she needs to make less money. How on earth do you think that is, taking care of these people? You all voted, and most of you during your candidacy talked about how you wanted to do this because you wanted to take care of this great city. These people make this the great city. You get rid of Dalton, and these people follow them, then you have a city, and you don't have a community anymore. And it's not where the people want to come.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Lynn, your turn.
Lynn Milam, 28 Morgan's Point Boulevard. And I'm taking a little different approach to this. I was at a viewing party, if you want to call it that, with 10 other people, and we watched the first two sessions. Okay, this is regarding, sorry, y'all's workshops. And some of the people I didn't know, and it was apparent, I was trying to talk people into coming and being part of the cops, which let me do that right now too while I'm here. I'm president of the cops, and to date, I want to say that, where'd he go? We have given them $8,833.40. Volunteers. Volunteers. And that's after some of us work seven days a week, our regular jobs. But anyway, there's my report, and now we're planning the barbecue cook-off. Okay, so I took, while I was sitting there and watching people, and I decided I was taking notes of what people were saying. Because I've heard one of y'all say before, "I don't care what it looks like, I want what I want." And so I thought, I'm going to write this down, what people say, because optics to me is a lot. It's a lot. I'm not saying anybody's names in this, I'm going to just say what these people said, leaving out the curse words, except for this first one. It's damn, that's not a big deal. Damn, who does that woman think she is? Number two, I guess these two just like to hear themselves talk. They must think it makes them look smarter. Three, why are they moving away from the microphone when it seems like it's important stuff they really don't want us to see? Four, I can't hear, why can't we hear? Why does she always let, why won't she let him finish one thought? Why does she always say, "I, I, I"? I thought council was a "we" thing for the entire city. This very much seems like three of them for sure have their own agendas, and I'm not sure about the one on the end. What's his name again? Then this one, "Two hours and 51 minutes." Bleep, 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 Jimbo finally got to say something, and he says the smartest thing we've said all night. "I can't hear chief." Why can't we hear chief? "I can't hear what Taryn's saying, can you turn this up?" No. The next one was, "When the city manager says something that hits close to home, she seems to want to move along very quickly." Quickly. That seems a bit sketchy. And then the other, 25 minutes into a session, and they can't even agree on one date. They want us to feel comfortable with them making choices for us? The next guy says, "I gave up Comic-Con for this." Then one, "I don't know why council members always ran on infrastructure and roads when they have no intention of ever making those roads. We've got that money, and they have no intention on spending it for our roads. They want to put a pothole here and a pothole there. They have no intention of fixing our roads." Then it says, "Doesn't it seem like the city is always behind on everything? Seems like we're always playing catch-up, cleaning up for the past." And then, "Citizens don't run this town, the small amount of voters do. They pick these people, and they're all related." This is what I was hearing. So I'm going to stop right there because there's six more pages like this, and it gets worse, really, to be quite honest with you. It gets worse. Thank you.
I'm sorry, no, you don't have to tell. Thank you, Lynn, appreciate it very much. Now Andrea, you're up.
Wow, I must have missed something super exciting. I will binge-watch this weekend and watch all the videos. My God. So, three minutes. I would like to comment on agenda items 6B and 6C, discussing consider EDC formation and operation timeline and 2023 EDC work plan and budget. I'm going to be reading because I don't want to use more than three minutes. 6B addresses the EDC formation on February 2011 as a public instrumentality under Development Corporation Act, Chapter 501, Type B, EDC Code 505. For years, the EDC seems to have believed they operate as a 501(c)(6) nonprofit until July 22, apparently, when it was discovered that this does not seem to have been the case. In January 2023, EDC decides to operate as a 501(c)(4) civic league or social welfare organization. And on March 9 this year, they filed for the status. Now, I have some legal and ethical concerns. The EDC was established in 2011 under the Development Corporation Act, Chapter 501, Type B, EDC Code 505. It is permitted by Texas law to levy a sales tax to fund its objectives and programs. Citizens have to vote on the sales tax periodically, I think we just did last fall, so we pay another quarter percent extra sales tax to go to the CDC. Taxpayer funds may be used to promote manufacturing, industrial development, and for Type B, also quality-of-life projects, parks, sports facilities, and so forth. Notably, taxpayer funds do not include use for political projects such as lobbying, sponsoring particular candidates. Now, this EDC, as a proposed or apparently already 501(c)(4), is also called a civic or social welfare organization, but if anybody knows what's going on in politics, a 501(c)(4) is permitted to use funds to spend on political issues like lobbying, sponsoring certain candidates. I have, if not a legal problem with it, an ethical problem with this, that taxpayer funds are used, or potentially used, to promote particular candidates. Now to item 6C, the budget and work plan. The EDC has been managed so well that they owe $50,000 fine. Apparently, the EDC plans to operate under 501(c)(4) and expects 97% of its funding to come from taxpayer money. On top of it, the fine, the EDC explains supposedly.
Andrea, bring it up, please.
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 I'm rushing, okay? Just like the other people that spent seven minutes. I presume the EDC hopes to negotiate this, or the council's going to pay for that fine. The EDC even proposes a budget that gets 97% of its funding from taxes again and doesn't even include the $15,000 of a fine in its budget. I don't call it imprudent, I actually call it foolish planning. Now, I guess the EDC can dream on, pretend to win the lottery on taxpayers' money, influence politicians, and imagine all the possibilities. If you vote for it, please research that and make sure our tax money is spent on projects and not on promoting politicians. Even if you get the promise, we won't do it. If you believe we won't do it, I'm sorry, then you are fools. I don't think you're fools. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Matt, it's your turn.
Last first, again. All right, good evening, mayor and council. First, I want to say what our privilege is to work alongside y'all for the better of Morgan's Point Resort. Over the last several budget workshops that we've been participating in, we have discussed a public safety office manager. I've listened to your feedback, I've taken your feedback to my team members who are here, some who are not here. We have evaluated your feedback and the return on investment. So I am here tonight to formally request an additional police officer in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. I appreciate the dialogue we have had as a group, as well as the dialogue we have had on an individual basis. Working together to find a solution is how progress is made. I want to thank you for listening, considering, and providing feedback on my request, and I feel that your suggestion of hiring an additional police officer does have additional benefits that help the city of Morgan's Point Resort. I appreciate the fact that y'all are trying to tackle a tremendous mountain. I couldn't sit where you are today, first of all. It's tremendous. And I appreciate the fact that y'all are doing something that all five of y'all have never done before, I'm assuming. So I appreciate that fact. Dorothy, specifically your wisdom and expertise was tremendous in helping my decision, our decision. And I hope that we continue to work together and dive deeper to make Morgan's Point Resort better again. Stephen, your support and discussion on needing to find a solution was inspiration, and I think that this is a solution. Pat, your feedback and support about certifications and trust, and trust that the person that we would hire to do some of these tasks is the right person, it could be better accomplished with a police officer, and that was your feedback that I took from you. And that was great advice. So again, tonight, I am asking for y'all to consider a police officer position in the fiscal year 23-2024 budget.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Snow? As we call him, Ronnie?
Hi, I'm Ronnie Snow from Two Frank James. I would like to start out with last night's meeting, where council member discussed phone calls he was getting about this council getting nothing done. I can assure you, with all the people I talked to, I have not heard one, not one person say anything bad about you, council member. So do not get discouraged. I was on a previous council that half the people would not even pick their packets up till they got to the council meeting. Instead, they would let someone else tell them what to vote and what to say. It was very discouraging to us as who the ones of us that hit the floor running, trying, as y'all are, y'all are. And, you know, people don't know what it's like sitting up there. They bring all these employees in, they bring all the employees in, and you're discussing their wages. And then, they don't know the pressure, and I know what y'all are going through, so I want that, you know, y'all take that to heart. Y'all are doing great. This council spent more time in the first three months in meetings than I can ever recall in the last 10 years. That's a good thing, but you guys and gals run this show, so please, please do not burn yourselves out, and you control what goes on. I would also like to say, tonight, voting on staggered terms. Yes, we need this, but why can't we start on the next time in two years when voting comes back up? Y'all have put in so much time already. I ask you to look back during Home Rule, that is when most of you probably started running. I ask you to remember all the negative information and retaliation that came up during this time. People really come out to vote for you and tell the city what they wanted. So I ask that you don't let these people who spent time voting on you go to waste. It seems like every time a few people don't get what they want, it's time to change the rules. Because this was never brought up in the last council that was running the show. That's all I got to say. I think what all of y'all are doing is great. Y'all do have the people's hearts and everything, and y'all are doing the best y'all can, and I appreciate it. So don't be discouraged by what people say.
Chad? Chad, you want to speak? Your turn. I can't read your last name, so you get up to...
Hello, Chad Kukowian. I live over Rancho del Lago. Just a couple of quick comments. I think Chief Schutze made a great point, I just don't think he asked for enough. You guys said a sergeant or lieutenant, I think it needs to be a sergeant or lieutenant. You guys said that past two budget council meetings, so that's what it needs to be. Don't settle for a police officer. I think it's asinine that a sergeant lieutenant is going to be doing stuff of admin position, but you guys want to pay for it, so be it. I think the position, when I watched last night with, I don't know who it was, with the secretary that was three hats or whatever, it was very disheartening that you were talking about a person, not a position. And I think it's absolutely disgusting that you value what that person's worth based on that person because you think you're training them. All you're training them to do is actually leave. Because I'll be honest with you, if I worked for you guys, I wouldn't work very much longer for you. I'd be looking for somewhere else because the stuff that you guys got going on and Dalton walking out last night, it's very disheartening, being a younger person that lives in this community, seeing what's going on. Mr. Klune, if you haven't been to the city manager's office in 90 days, that's disgusting. It absolutely is. And for you to guys say that he was bullying you last night, all I saw you do, Ms. Allen, is run over everybody and still make fun of Dalton after he left. It's absolutely disgusting that that happened. Absolutely disgusting. The only person that I saw, Mr. Jimbo, I appreciate you actually commenting when you could because, coming from the fire, the police side of it, someone has to represent us. You can't sit here and say, "I support you when I want to, thank you for your service, but don't ask me for shit else." You can't do that. And I'm sorry for my language, it's just, this is a long time coming where I've tried not to come up here, I've tried to let you guys, because I know you guys don't realize who I am, but I teach for you guys. I teach for you guys, and you guys get free money for when I teach for you. But I'll be honest with you, as much as I love the emergency services guys here, I can't be associated with something that is so, it's a debacle. It's a debacle, and I don't understand. I appreciate you guys actually doing this position, I really do, but just like Jimbo said last night with the comments from other people that he heard, it's not your own agenda, it is the agenda of the city. So, in my own opinion, if I hear one more thing about roads every single time and every other comment to nickel and dime exactly what it is, then I just think it's asinine. It's asinine. We fund it, you fund it, you spend it, it's there. But to sit there and want to micromanage every position inside the city is absolutely uncalled for. If you don't like Kerry, if you don't like Dalton, then you fire them, you pay them their severance package, and you get on your way. That's my wholehearted opinion, and like I said, I'm sorry that it's coming out like this, I'm just extremely frustrated by this, that I have to watch from home, take time off work to come up here, because people that we're supposed to look up to, and they're supposed to lead our city, are acting like children on video camera for everyone to see, everybody to see. It's always there on YouTube, and if you don't know how you look on YouTube, you should probably go watch it. It is absolutely disgusting. I apologize. Thank you.
Last, and probably the leastest, Jimann? She's the dessert on our deal writer, she's always the last one to speak, so.
Good evening. Because I am an elder and quite proud of it. Okay. Now, can you hear me now? Okay. Because I'm an elder and quite proud of it, I've had to write my statement down in order not to forget anything. First of all, Alderman Snyder stated last night that he had received requests from citizens to please ask each one of you to speak into the microphones. Those of us who, due to family obligations, cannot attend all or some of the meetings, try to watch and hear them streaming. There are times when we know someone is speaking but cannot hear them. I experienced that last night while trying to watch. Please speak into the microphones. If some of you need lessons in voice projection, I will be happy to give them to you. Next, I would like to address staggered terms for our city council. It is quite obvious from the fact that this council had to spend three workshops on the most complete city budget that Morgan's Point Resort has ever had in my many years of attending council meetings, that we need staggered terms for continuity. I have been told by some previous council members that it takes a year to learn the job. So we have five people learning the job and taking too much time on each thing. Will anything ever be accomplished? It has been stated that you were elected for two years and you want to serve the full term. I ask you, is that thinking of the city or your own personal wishes? So you wait... So you wait until the next election, and the elected council wants to serve its full term. At that rate, the city will never have staggered terms. I attended the council meeting, where it was decided to go with all council elected at the same time, due to costs. Since the city partners with Bell County for elections, that reasoning is no longer valid, and with over $6 million surplus, in surplus, I feel the city can go with staggered terms. It is in the best city, interests of the city and citizens that staggered terms be reinstated. Last of all, in relation to the statement made by a council member in the workshop last night, to the city manager to... Pardon you. To the city manager to stop bullying the council members, I recall how the city staff was treated by a volunteer working on city accounting books. We all should strive to be better. There's a lot of pettiness going on, and quite frankly, it has no place in the city. Be better. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for all the comments, we appreciate that from our citizens. Thank y'all very much. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and that has to do with four sets of minutes. We postponed two because of some corrections, so do I hear a motion, or do I hear a motion to accept that?
Um, yes.
You're not approving it, I'm just asking you to accept it.
To accept which minute?
No, just accept the consent agenda.
Oh, well, I have some changes.
Well, we'll talk about that here in just a second, so, okay, it enters second, I hope for that.
Yeah, that was a motion, I'll second.
Okay, it's been, okay, Dorothy made a motion, and Jimbo seconded it. Now, Dorothy, you said you had some corrections, let's go ahead and...
Sure, so, the June minutes have been corrected, and we got a revised copy from, I want to say Camille, Camille, so if you guys want to take a minute and look at those, we just got them today? Yeah, so you might want to take a minute, I'm fine with the June 13th.
June 13th?
As revised today. Okay?
Okay.
So if everybody wants to take a minute and look, and make sure you're okay, we can go to the next one.
Well, we'll do, we'll approve a ball at once or not, so we'll just, if everybody's good with that, we'll move on to the 20 second. We'd like to do, we can do it all at once.
I didn't have any changes to that.
No changes to that one? Anybody else have changes to the 20 second? Still looking at 13th, we're not, we're not past it yet, so, okay, what about July 11th?
Yes, so July 11th, I do have some corrections, and Roxanne forwarded them to Ophelia and Camille Monday, and we haven't had a chance to make them yet, so...
Do you want to approve it based on the...
You want me to just say what my changes are? I gave you guys copies.
Based on the corrections being made, is that, does it be okay?
Yes, so if you guys agree with the corrections, I put them in front of you.
Yeah, I have no issues with them. Yeah. I'm good with them on this side.
So, Ophelia, are you good that we'll go ahead and make these changes, and then we'll be able to get the July minutes? Yes.
Safe say, go to July 11th workshop minutes, or anything on that one, too?
July... I think the workshop was the 10th, wasn't it? Oh, no, this is the pre, yeah, yeah, this is the workshop.
Good on that one?
Yes, uh-huh. So it's really just July 11th, if everyone's good with these changes, then I make a motion that we accept the July 11th minutes as revised.
What about the 13th? Are you, or you still would look at the 13th? I was gonna try to do everything at once. Okay, it's revised, it's revised, so, I don't know, do I hear a motion to accept all four of those?
I make a motion to accept what the changes on the July 11th, that's recommended.
Subject to the corrections that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
You're second? Second for Pat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next is committee reports. Library.
And I have the auxiliaries, too.
Pardon?
The auxiliaries, I have the auxiliaries when you're ready, okay.
I'll put you in place of Parks.
Nope.
Pam Robinson, Mary Ruth Briggs Library Chairperson. We had 7,651 books in the library catalog, with 12 added books during the month of July, 308 members, with 16 added members during July, 200...
Yeah, I guess that's the summer reading program people sign up for.
Not really, not really, not really, but maybe half and half, not surprising.
That's a high number for us.
It is. That's what I thought when I put them all in. 291.5 volunteer hours, with 103.5 volunteers added during the month of July, and that was primarily due to summer reading. Volunteer Day on July the 19th was held, with six volunteers getting the library in good working order for summer reading. Our next meeting is August the 18th, and we invite you to come and join us and learn how to take care of the books. Our library board meeting has been rescheduled from Wednesday, August 9th, to Tuesday, August 15th. It's done so that we may fully discuss the summer reading program, which ends on August the 12th, that's this Saturday. As you all may know, our Elder Explorers is a part of the library, and I want to tell you a little bit about what elders are doing. July 27th was our meeting. We started with a Getting to Know You program with 33 people, and that's quite a few for us. We had a travel agent, Connie Koenig, who met with us and discussed the day trip that we wanted to go on, and we talked a little bit about where we would meet. We decided on Fellowship Baptist, they agreed to let us park, I guess we could park there and get on the bus, and some other requirements. She came back to us with a quote for going to the Arboretum in Dallas in October, and we're still talking with her about that, but be on the lookout for some information on it. Then from 10 until noon, we had beginner line dancing, and we had almost everybody in the room participated in this, men and women, and had a great time. We danced for two hours, and our instructor was from Belton Senior Center, and it was a lot of fun, a lot, lot of fun. Our next program is going to be on August the 31st, 9:00 to noon, here at the Event Center. Our program will be chair yoga from 9:30 to 10:30, and it's going to be taught by a local yoga teacher, and this will be followed by table games until noon. As you all may know, our summer reading program has been ongoing, and this Saturday is our last session, and will be held at the Public Safety Center from 10 until noon. The program is titled Responders' Day, and will be hosted by the NPR Fire Department with tours and a big surprise. I think everybody kind of knows what that big surprise is, so maybe it isn't a big surprise anymore. And we will award prize backpacks to the top four students who had the highest minutes read, and then everybody else gets a backpack with supplies in it. We'll take pictures and have ice cream, and that's it for the year, our fourth session is over. And I think it's been very successful, and I want to tell you just a short little story about what a mother who came with her three children for the first time ever, she talked about how wonderful this program was. She said, "My children did not like to read. They didn't want to read, we couldn't make them read." And she said, "Now that there's a little incentive with prizes each week," she said, "they read all the time. They read while they're watching TV, they read at the dinner table, they read all the time." So, I think that was a really good thing that our program has done. Thanks very much.
Would you like to do the planning and zoning?
My name is Becky Cooley, Chairman, Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Committee. I have no report.
Appreciate it. Dorothy, you're going to take the place of Parks.
Auxiliary. I'll read this report from Karen, she could not be here tonight, and she's the president of the Ladies Auxiliary. Now, for those of you that might not know, the Ladies Auxiliary supports the Fire Department. They're going to meet Thursday, August 10th, at 6:00 PM at the Event Center, and they usually meet on the second Thursday of each month, and they're asking anyone to please join them. They will get you involved right away, it's a fun group, and they are so busy, they probably have an activity each month. The water aerobic season ends next week. Barbara, thank you for heading up that program. Thanks also to City Administration, Maintenance and Water Departments, the lifeguard, the instructors, NPR neighbors, and Barbara Lyman for a very successful season. The September 23 chili cook-off plans are coming along, they're planning vendors, bake sale, raffle baskets, tasting cups for people's choice. Of course, we'll continue the tradition of the friendly rivalry with the Fire Department Challenge, and the Morgan's Point Fire Department plans on getting the trophy back this year from Moffitt, and we hope everybody reads the feature article last Sunday in the Temple Telegram on the event. Sign up to cook and compete. The auxiliary members will be participating again this year in the Bell County Senior Expo on September 26th at the Expo Center. And again, a reminder, the 5K run will not be held this year with the chili cook-off. The run's been moved to March of 2024 with JoJo Guzman as the auxiliary organizer and planner, watch for updates. Thank you always to each and every one of you for supporting our events and fundraisers, we appreciate you. Karen Stagner.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Okay, moving right along, we're going to look at our Resolution 2023.19, that's an appointment of new members at EDC. There has been a resignation of Mr. Stad Briggs, who was on EDC, has resigned, and a vacancy has been created, and the EDC would like to nominate Terry Hara to take his place, take his place, so I'd like to have somebody to accept Resolution 2023-19, please.
I'm just curious, is Mr. Hara here tonight? Okay, just wanted to...
I motion to table the nomination for 2023.19 until Mr. Hara can be here.
Second?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, typically, when, well, if you table it, it's done. I can't even comment, right? Neil? If Stephen decides to table it, you can't move forward?
Yeah, nobody's second.
Oh, I see. Can I ask why? Why you want to postpone the position?
We can open it for discussion.
Okay, I'd like to open it for discussion.
Well, you can accept the motion, then we can discuss it. You accept the motion, there's a second, then we can have discussion, and you don't have to pass it, you vote on it, so you can take it at that time, or you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the appointment of the EDC member.
And then second it. Okay, now, it's open for discussion.
Honestly, as we get closer and closer to trying to shape our city, I think it's important for people to be here. I want to meet them, I want to shake their hand, I want to see their face, and I think that that, you know, that's not asking a whole lot, like with planning and zoning, if you miss a meeting after, I think it's in the bylaws, I think it's two meetings, is that correct?
Two or three, yeah.
Two or three, then you're no longer in planning and zoning. And so, I just think, you know, if you're wanting to be on a committee, then you're going to have to make that dedication to at least be here when we're nominating you, and I understand, like, life happens, I get that, but I'm going to stick to that, and this is irrelevant, like, that's just going to be one of my non-negotiables now.
Yeah, so do we do that going forward, or do you want to, because we didn't really request that they be here typically, they're sometimes here, they're sometimes not here, so do we want to make that kind of requirement going forward, or do you want to make the requirement now, that we'd like to have the nominees for the different committees and commissions come to the council meeting when they're being nominated?
I don't know if I can jump in on that one, I don't know if I'm on board with that. I got no issue with council working with the department, with the heads and saying, "Hey, we, you know, understand you guys support this guy," because it was 100% unanimous, the decision, so I'm, you know, I'm inclined to support that right out the gate, to be honest with you. The only thing I will caution about requiring people to be here is that's kind of, that's kind of a double standard, honestly. And you can look at our future meetings coming up, we're going to have folks absent, and I'm okay with that, but to require somebody who is simply being nominated for a position, you know, to mandate that they have to be here for that, I think it's a double standard, and I think it's a little unfair. So, my two cents.
There's a motion on a table to accept Mr. Hara, and so we, yes or no, so...
Can I just add one more thing?
Yeah.
Typically, when committees and EDC come to us with nominations, the committee has vetted this person, the person has just, you know, has agreed to volunteer, and unless there's something compelling that says we don't want this particular person for a particular reason, I am for taking the recommendation of the committees coming to us for their own nominees.
Yeah, I concur with that, and if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to accept. Let me find the number.
I'll second it.
Yeah, Resolution 2023.19.
So we're going to put it up for a vote, is that okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or approved and...
You tell Mr. Hara we'd love to...
Motion passes.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is, and we had, a little background on this, we had an extensive meeting this afternoon on EDC, so, you know, right now, we're going to discuss the, consider EDC formation and operation timeline.
And I think, should I open it for discussion?
I'm sorry, say that.
Okay, I'd like to open it for discussion.
Okay.
I'll second.
I think this timeline for me was a, we have a new president of EDC, and Linda's still here?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, if you want to comment on this, please jump right in, but there was an issue with our standing with the IRS on what kind of corporation we were, and it's confusing, and documents can't be found, and so Linda came up with a timeline for us of basically all the work that she's done to try to get to the bottom of it. And without going into all the detail and all the work she did over the last year, the bottom line is, they're still fighting with the IRS for past tax returns that have not been filed, and they're getting a roughly $15,000 penalty that she is still fighting, but she wanted to let us know, they've changed the entity from a 501(c)(6) to a 501(c)(4), and that's been done. They're caught up on their audits from, till 2022, and it's kind of a synopsis of all the work that's been done.
Right, and this goes, it's a timeline, and it ends on September 23rd, so hopefully within a month and a half, we'll get it all done, so basically, we're just asking us to approve our timeline, but...
Oh, it's history.
Yeah.
I don't think we have to approve it, I think it was FYI for us to understand everything she went...
That's what it was, yeah. I'd agree with everybody.
Do we, are we supposed to discuss it? Consider and discuss it, so we, I think we're good.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving along, next thing has to do with EDC also, has to do with their, EDC's work plan, the 2023-24 EDC work plan and budget, so we talked about that, they're in... So we talked about that, their income is from a quarter percent sales tax that we levy on sales at Morgan's Point, so that is their income. And the only discussion of that, I think they're in the packet. There's revenue...
Linda went over this briefly with us at the workshop. And then, even though the $15,000 IRS penalty is not in this budget, they have budgeted for it in '22, '23. So by, before their fiscal year end, are you fiscal or calendar? Fiscal. So before September 30th, they will probably get a response back from IRS, and they will have made that payment of $15,000. So she didn't need to put it in the budget because hopefully, it'll be handled in this current fiscal year.
Do I hear a motion to accept that?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to accept the, the EDC's current work plan.
Second it.
Second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next, next on the agenda is creating a Parks and Recreation Committee. It has been brought to our attention, I think, two sessions ago, that we would like to establish a Parks and Recreation Committee. We do now have the information on that to go forward. So what I would like to do is have a motion to accept 2023.14, and that's creating a Parks and Recreation Committee. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I moved, I make a motion to accept, or it's 2023-14.
And a second?
I'll second.
Now it's open for discussion. I think probably with the help of some of the council members has initiated the... And are they acceptable to everybody?
To it, because you... Oh, okay, so at our, I think it was the May meeting, our very first meeting, that's something that I have a passion about, is to recreate our Parks and Rec Committee. We used to have one. And so it's taken up until now to get it written and get it in the, get the ordinance up in front of us to vote on it. What I understand is we're all in favor of it. This is a formality to accept the wording of this resolution.
Actually, we're not, not the resolution, we're just accepting Parks and Recreation Committee and the resolution. I mean, in a minute, we'll go through the bylaws.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, that was the ordinance.
Right. Sit over the motion and second. Is any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Now, we're going to, this still has to do with the Parks and Recreation, so next thing we're going to do is discuss and consider Resolution 2023.17, Appointment of Chairman of Parks and Recreation. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to accept.
And a second?
This says 17, 2023, 17. The actual resolution says 18. So, Ophelia...
I don't have 18, I'm showing 17.
It says it at the top of the resolution.
Oh.
But the minutes say 17, I think whichever one it is, it is.
Yeah, not the minute, not the minutes, though.
It looked like, it looked like you're right, it looked like it's 2023-18 on the...
I say minute? I'm sorry, agenda.
So I just want to clarify, backing up, we did just vote to accept the ordinance that has been written for Parks and Rec, and now we are voting on the chairman of Parks and Rec.
Right, right.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, so we decided...
Discussion was, was it 17 or 18?
I don't know.
Well, I'm showing 18 on the resolution on my...
The motion is 2023.18, according to this document.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would...
Change it on our agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept that 2023.18, and I would like to nominate Councilmember Bishop to serve as the chairman in our stead.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? You want to table it? I'm just kidding. You did show up, you did show up, okay.
Honestly, Dennis. It could be great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Stephen, you got it.
Just to state for the, for the audience, we did discuss this at a workshop at length, and one of the reasons why we chose Mr. Bishop is because he has a passion for our green spaces, and so that would be kind of right up his alley. So we think he'll do a good job.
And we...
Ultimately, I'm going to be a voice for the community. I mean, that's...
Now, since we have a...
We wanted to align each of the council people to go ahead and figure out what our passions are and to try to align our skills. Like, I think Jimbo is attending the P&amp;Z meetings, and so each of us are taking a observatory role, I guess, in our committees, so we can stay closer to what the committees are doing.
Okay, next on the agenda, still has to do with Parks and Recreation is, except the draft. Now, the draft is in your packet right there.
Right.
And that was, was brought up, that basically outlines the bylaws and rules and regulations. So do I hear a motion to accept the bylaws and rules and regulations?
Can I just make a comment real quick?
Yes.
So when we decided that we wanted to go have a Parks and Rec Committee, Jimbo had an awesome idea, and that is, let's go ahead and come up with an application so we can solicit from the city, because some people volunteer, but some people aren't aware that a position is even open. So we decided to come up with an application. The backside of the application tells you what you're getting into, you know, that it's a committee of seven people, and how often you meet, and what your terms are, and how you're governed, and things like that, so that you know what you're getting into. And then this is a draft of the application, which is pretty simple. Submit it to somebody by a certain date, name, phone, address, email, how long have you lived in Morgan's Point, briefly describe why you would like to join Parks and Rec, and which of your skills would be most beneficial to the committee. So we need to work with our Communication and Marketing Department to figure out the best distribution for the application so that we can get volunteers to submit that they would like to participate.
That was a plug, too, so anybody watching online, feel free to come and visit us.
And we just need to decide, we talked about maybe submitting the application to City Hall to our City Secretary, and she could gather up all the applications for us, and maybe get a little notebook, and then we'll go through them, and then by a certain date. I don't know how long we want to have this open for volunteers.
Basically, we're looking at right now, just to accept the draft, so we can always set a date...
But the draft needs to have the information in it.
And have the application in it. In the timeframe, I think we can still set at a later date.
Oh, okay, well, I just wanted to go ahead and put it on the application itself, and I wasn't sure who you wanted it sent to or by what date.
Well, why don't we do everything in 60 days? That ought to give everybody a chance, 60 days, should be a fair amount.
Yeah.
If you want to put a date on it, we'll put that on the application.
Okay, so today's the 8th, so somewhere around...
I was trying to use the application as a generic, and that way I didn't want to put a date on it.
Well, I just want them, if they pick up an application, they know the deadline, and they know who to submit it to.
There you go.
That's all I, that's the only reason it's on there.
Okay.
60 days, August 68?
October, October.
August 68, I'm good with that. That was a joke.
I missed it, I'm sorry, I'm brain dead.
That sounds like a great date, October the 15th.
Yeah.
October 15th, and Ophelia, you're good collecting the applications. Thank you, okay.
All in favor of accepting the draft or the Parks and Rec, along with the application and the date, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five oh. Next one, Carrie, I need your help on this one right here. It's Gusting Center approving grant applications for the emergency generator at our Public Safety Center.
Yeah, do y'all want me to talk, or make a motion, or... Okay, so we actually had brought this to council a couple of months ago, I can't remember if it was with y'all or with previous council, but then we realized after we had the resolution that the grant category that we were looking to submit in, we did not qualify. But just a little backstory, there is a generator at the Public Safety Center that is for operation for the building. It is, is non-operational. So right now, obviously, you know, city funds are, you know, at a high premium for us, so anytime we can hopefully get a grant funding, we will. So really, right now, the rough cost of the proposed generator would be about $75,000. So this would be basically a 75% outside funding, so the city would be on the hook for 25%, roughly $18,750. So really, the submittal due date was November 2nd, so we just need the resolution so we can get moving on the submittal. And, I mean, we can talk about it later, but too, I, there is now in the packet, there's a sheet right before the financial ones, I think it's roughly page 80. But so we're trying to summarize all the grant activity that we have going on within the city. So I mean, roughly, we have over $2.9 million of grants that could be coming due, so hopefully, you know, we get those. And obviously, those are two big projects with other generators at the water storage tanks and the safe routes to the school sidewalk, but every little bit that we can get of free money, we're always looking for it.
I really appreciate the page 80, the grant funding sheet, it's all on one sheet, that it tells us past grants that have been completed, and then what's pending, so I think that's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, looks great.
With that, do I hear a motion to accept the approving the grant application for the emergency generator?
A motion to accept. Oh, go ahead, Pat, I'm sorry.
To accept.
And I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five oh. Okay, next one has to do with a real hot subject, roads.
All right.
I think Roxanne wanted to kind of discuss that, is that correct? Is that what you want to do?
Yes, I would like to do that. As a city council, that was one of the things, you know, we ran on, and I'm not sure why my mic is breaking in and out, but anyhow, it's one of the things that we ran on, and because I have some family members and friends in the past who have been in road construction, I kind of got, started doing some research on this. So what we, what we did is, we looked at a 2014 grant that was written for the city by engineering and our maintenance department, was very thorough. Then we looked at a 2021 grant, I mean, report, not grant, I'm sorry, road study that was done in 2014, nine years ago, and then again in 2021. The 2021 one was not quite as thorough, and so then the next thing we did is, I ended up getting ahold of a gentleman from the Texas Asphalt Association, and he recommended that we go to the savmyroads.com website. It's actually funded by a paving company out of Waco, that website is, but it's a national proposal, and if you go through that website, they take you step by step on how to preserve roads. So the recommendation on the website, which was also recommendations I got from people I had talked to, was that you don't start with the very worst roads, you start with your collector roads. And those are the roads that take you, when you get out of your little road and you get to the main, main road, those are your collector roads. So we as a, and the reason we, they recommend that is if you wait until those roads are in horrible condition, it gets more and more expensive. So if we would, you know, not necessarily choose the worst roads, but choose the ones that are used the most, and see what we can do to preserve those roads, there are plans out now that will keep us, keep those roads working and in operation for 40 years. So we, as a city council, along with our city manager, went, when we did the road about a month ago, day before city council last month, we all went together and we drove our main collector roads, using the 2014 and 2021 studies to determine which of those were collector roads. And then we would now like to consider and propose that we send out for RFP, Request for Proposal, or Request for Bids, and we'd like to get at least three different bids from three different paving companies. And we would like to just tell them, we want them to look at the collector roads, and we have a list here, I'll tell you those in just a second, and we'll go over those collector roads, and then we'll let them recommend what they would do with those roads. If they come back, very, very similar, and we just have to look at the bids, we'll then have our city engineer look over the proposals that we're going to accept, and if, and if approved, then I, we can go ahead and start paving those roads. So that was our plan to get started, and that's what I'd like to propose tonight. So the thing that we're going to have to discuss tonight is the actual roads themselves. So when looking at the collector roads, we found that, we went, I'm just going to go not in the order of how bad they are, but in the order of where we started. So we started at Sherwood, Cliftwood, Driftwood, and Clearwater. And that, that whole works is kind of like one conglomerate of a big road that will take you out to Morgan's Point Road. And so that would be one road we would like them to look at. The second one would be Morgan's Point Boulevard, and this is, we feel like this is a very important road. It's right where our city hall is, and our, you know, all of our community center activities going on, and so that would be another one, we'd like to have the bids on what they think would be the best way. Then we looked at the, from Morgan's Point Road, from right here on the corner to the end, actually is not county, the rest is county. And so that would be considered a collector road. So it's at Lake, it's from Morgan's Point Boulevard to the cliffs at Lake Belton. Then we looked at Cheyenne, Cheyenne, it's the Horseshoe and Calamity Jane, because that's the main road that gets you to the marina and lots of traffic there. And then we looked at Tanyard, Oakmont Circle, and Canyon Circle over on the other side of Morgan's Point as a group. We looked at Bonnie Lane, and at, we all kind of concluded that even though Bonnie Lane is really a collector road, it's owned by multiple, Belton and Temple and I don't know who all, and so we really felt like that was one we didn't want to tackle at this time. Then we looked at, number seven was Sobrante, Branding Iron, Wrangler, and Cedar Trails. And because these appear to be in very good condition, we were thinking they would be low on the priority, except for that tonight, Jimbo just said that from Morgan's Point Road, Cedar Trails going in just a little ways should probably be looked at, so we're going to kind of look at, you know, consider that. Then the next roads we had were Lake Forest, and Shetland, and Fox, and those are all roads that from, on the, on the north side of Morgan's Point, they take you out to North Ridge and North Point Road and 317. And then finally, we looked at the Great West Loop and Cottonwood Loop, and those again are all, you know, kind of, these are what we would consider our main collector roads, and we'd like to look at what we can do. If they come back and say we can just do a sealant on it, we may be able to do a lot and keep the roads going, we won't know until we get the bids. But I will say, too, in, in our research, the 2014 road study did a traffic pattern study, too. And even though that's nine years old, we may have gained a little bit of traffic since then, and we know we have, but, but basically, it's kind of the same. And the road, the Sherwood Road had some of the highest traffic pattern, and I drove through that road on Sherwood, and there's lots of houses there. So definitely, and that one's probably in the worst shape, so definitely something that I think we need to propose. So I'll open it for discussion, and then I will make a motion.
It may be difficult to do this and meet the requirements on bidding. Spend, to spend more, I mean, if it's over $50,000, we've got to bid it. And if you say to somebody, you know, give us a proposal of what you think we ought to do and how much it's going to cost, that's really not competitive bidding.
Okay.
You've got to have a, you've got, going to have to have a set of standards, really from, from your engineer.
Okay.
I mean, if it's just a matter of going out and saying, you know, we want to be, we want to seal coat everything, well then, what's it going to be to seal coat 5,000, you know, linear feet of, of the roads? I think we're going to have to come up with a, you know, we have to, we're going to have to, to meet the bidding requirements, we're going to have to put together a bid request that has specific items on what we want them to do.
Okay.
And then they'll, you know, then put that out for competitive bidding.
Is this something we need to have the city engineer look at and come up with? Is that, maybe...
Once you decide what roads you want to work on, then I think you're going to have to have the engineer look at it and, you know, give us the bid, and make the bid specifications, and then let them, you know, handle the bidding process like they do on... and then let them, you know, handle the bidding process like they do on other things.
And then when the bids come in, the city engineer will be a part of, or the review process to give us recommendations. Yeah, that allows us to get apples-to-apples bids.
Neil, how do, how do I, okay, since this was on the agenda to assess and consider approving roads and submit city engineer for RFP, since we can't do that, do we table it, or do we postpone it, or what do we do?
No, no table.
We need to make a decision.
No.
I think what Neil is suggesting, we probably ought to discuss.
But it's not on the agenda that way.
I think what you're going to have to do, you're not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to take action on this as it's posted tonight, because we're not going to, I don't think we're going to be able to do that.
That's what I was saying, it's, we can't.
It says submit, it does say submit to city engineers on the agenda.
Well, I think you can vote to, you know, to get with the, with the city state. Well, first of all, you, y'all are going to have to come up with what roads you want to do.
Okay, we've done that step.
Okay, so you. You're going to have to come up with a list of what roads you want to do. And if you've done that, then you can vote to approve that. And then also vote then to get, to engage the city engineer to develop the bid specifications on what needs to be done for those roads.
Right.
Okay?
Barbara, you all right?
So do you all want to vote on the streets that Roxanne, that's which I think they're posted, we've got them, is to make a motion to accept those streets to be presented to the city engineer to come up with specifications?
Yes, and Carrie, could you, could you talk about what you just handed us before?
Yeah, so basically, we had gotten our city engineer several months ago, six months ago, we had discussed it in the first kind of council initiation workshop whenever, when it was still election cycle. So basically, we had kind of thought about going down this road, because obviously, roads are always a controversial topic, no matter who the council is. So Dalton had gotten Cobb Tenley to kind of do a, just an engineering or probable cost to do basically one of these sections that kind of overlaps with one of your shirt, like your number one.
Okay.
And so I think roughly, the total cost was roughly eight hundred twenty-nine thousand. But so that was for the two-inch mill and overlay. So to that point, that's when, when they reviewed the roads, and that's what their recommendation was, if you wanted to go that route. However, they are not road engineers, so they just did the highest one. So it was more of a price point for y'all, that council at that time, to have as a frame of reference. So really, that was why studies got brought up. So when we got proposed the RAS study, use the experts that are available to tell you what you need to do with the roads. Because it's great to spend money on roads, but at, you know, at what point do you want to, you know, at what cost do we want to, you know, burden the city at?
Yeah, I guess what I'm hearing and what I want to make clear, so council has identified these roads, but we have left the priority, in essence, up to the engineer. Is that kind of what I'm getting? The engineer is going to take a look at this, and he, or she, or it, or they, whatever, is going to determine the priority of these roads that have been identified. Is that right? Is that where we're headed?
Well, I still think y'all probably should get priority. Like, if your numbering is, hey, one through nine, and then they can come up with a specific engineering or probable cost to then get the bid process started.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, so do we want to go out for, if there's nine or six that are immediate or the highest priority, do we want to select four for the engineer to review and go out for bid on? Do we want them to do all six?
I think you ought to look at all of them. You can eliminate one or two or three if the price is too big, or we may decide to do three instead of two because of pricing. But if you just do two or three, then you're pretty much locked in. So why don't you look at all of them, if you're going to have the engineer look at them, look at all, whatever it was, seven, eight?
Nine.
Nine, have them look at nine of them, and then if it's more than we want to budget, we pick the ones that you want.
Yeah, I would like to eliminate Bonnie Lane, because that's, that's a real.
Okay, there's a good one to do, because that's.
It was number six, which.
That's part county, part Belton, part Temple, part everything, part us.
And then a number seven, only leave in Cedar Trails.
Okay, you want to do that, when voting on accepting those?
Yes.
And submitting, and have Dalton submit that to the city engineer to come up with a requirement?
Yeah, engineering a probable cost, and then.
Probably, you want to do that?
Start the bid process.
So, and then.
So yes, this will, you know, obviously, then now we're waiting on the engineers to get back with the, you know, the engineering costs for all these roads that we're putting out there. So I mean, this will take time.
I think it's better to get, have the engineer give you an idea of how the cost, then you can decide.
Okay. I like that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to hear a motion to accept the streets that Roxanne mentioned, excluding Bonnie Lane and.
A motion to.
Sobrante, and for engineering.
I'm going to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion passed, let's get started on, get started on streets. Okay, next one, discuss to consider repairs to the marina. We had some, and I guess Ronnie left, we had some high water problems with the lake being low water, extending cables and things like that, so there's been some repairs need to be, to be done on that. Do you have that, Carrie? I don't have that in my.
I do. And I mean, this funding technically basically falls under the emergency funding request. So Dalton had already approved for this process to get going. And then Ronnie would have been able to speak on it, but there is already some lead time. You've got to love that still, even on just repairs, since it's specific to our marina. So really, the process is started, and we'll just come back with updates whenever it gets started. But if y'all need to officially approve the emergency funding, so.
There's no requirement, requirement for us to do that. It's under emergency, and it's already been approved. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's.
So we have the funds and the budget to do this, so it doesn't require.
I think so.
Yeah, and we were, we.
That comes out of the enterprise run, it comes out of marina, right?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
So, yeah, so technically, we had already talked about this with Rodney Snow. We all agreed that, you know.
Does it make a motion to accept the repairs for the marina? Do I hear a motion to accept that?
I second.
Okay, second. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five oh.
Okay, I have a, I do have a discussion on this yet that's not dealing with the motion. And that's, there's a, there's a number seven and eight here that are quotes for bridges and improvement that should be made. And I really would like to see the council, you know, look at that down the road very shortly, because these, these proposals were to put in aluminum docking for the marina, which would lighten the load, which now is kind of being weighted down and torn apart because it's so heavy with the water being so low. And so one of that, the first bid was for the redecking, was a forty-six thousand dollar item. And then there was one for outside, single-sided dock to install reinforcement plate full length, and that was a forty-three thousand dollar bid. Those are not emergencies, but they do need to be done, and I would like to see us put that on the agenda to consider.
That being the CIP workshop.
We can get that on the future agenda if you want to.
And I'll get with Ronnie, or Dalton will, because, yeah, I mean, really, if we need to bring it back up in September.
You want it on the next agenda?
Let me get a little bit more information from Ronnie, kind of more on the timeline.
Yeah, just in the next few months. I'd like to see that on the agenda.
And then that's on.
Maybe put that on the agenda with maybe the possibility of changing the rates at the marina? Y'all want to do that at one time? We were talking about having a rate discussion last night. Y'all want to do it at one time?
Well, is this a part of the capital discussion?
Part of the CIP.
Carrie?
Yeah, I mean, not a huge picture, big picture items, more like the refloating and then the wave break or anything like this. But let us get with Ronnie, because like I said, I think even here, what was included in the, in the packet wasn't probably, it wasn't as informative as it could have been kind of with the timing and stuff like that. So I didn't send him the memo until after the fact. But, you know, a lot of these things, if we can get a memo in front of y'all, it makes it easier for y'all to make better informed decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
These are items, if these are maintenance items that were approved in the budget, you know, in the annual budget for the marina, well then, you don't have to come back and approve.
Right.
Doing specific items of maintenance. You've already, you've got a maintenance budget.
Right, we don't have enough in there this year, so that's.
So that, then if you don't have enough, then it's going to require a budget amendment. But it's normal, normal maintenance items, as long as the money's there, well then, you've approved that maintenance fund to do those things.
But is this in the budget?
It's probably not, and I don't have.
It was an emergency.
Right, but yeah, so then technically, Dalton's always talked, you know, about the same way, that then we will have a year-end budget adjustment cleanup item that, hey, these are emergency fundings, it doesn't necessarily have to get approved, we were going to spend it, and then we will have a year-end budget adjustment that, that kind of cleans up some of these emergency or just other funding as how the budget kind of meanders.
Okay, moving right along, just that's the case on that one. Next one on the agenda, discuss consider approving senior accountant position and beginning the hiring process immediately in preparation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which we talked about extensively in our workshop. Is there any further discussion on that? I think everything was pretty much approved for that, for that position. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
I make a motion to accept the going out for a senior accountant position effective immediately.
I think the.
Proposed by Carrie in our budget.
I think our salaries have been discussed, it's all been said, everything's said already, so.
And it's in the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, but we're going to spend a little bit, if we can get someone on quick.
Possibly, yeah, we, right.
Right.
You're a second to that?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, I think Roxanne, did you, oh, Roxanne seconded.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, next one's always the fun one here, staggered terms. Discussing, house bill fourteen thirty-four on the eighty-eighth Congress related to staggered terms. I know a couple of times ago, everybody was for them, but they didn't want to implement them at the time. So, entertaining a motion to either approve or disapprove of staggered terms. I think y'all had some discussion, but I think Neil's just pretty much clarified it with the, his opinion on that, I believe, right? I think he emailed most council members on that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Dorothy's handing out some, I know last time we discussed just sharing the thoughts on it, so I'd like to just open it for a brief discussion before we decide for sure.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree. A second.
A discussion.
Well, I'm just gonna, I won't say everything I'm going to say first, but I'm just going to say that I did write to Dr. Brad, Mr. Brad Buckley's office, and I got a little bit of a response. And then I had a local resident who actually got ahold of him and talked to him for twenty minutes. And he said, this ordinance was written for council to decide or not decide, it's not for the city, you know, attorney or the city manager. It is, it is an ordinance that we are, it was written for us to decide. So I thank that resident for getting that information.
I can start a discussion. I know Jimbo sent a letter around. Jimbo, do you want to address the letter that you sent around? I'm sorry, it was on Facebook. Never mind. I'll.
I'll have to pull it up.
You put a letter out on Facebook.
Yeah.
And the neighbors in Morgan's Point.
Or you don't have to.
No, go ahead, I'll pull it up. No, go ahead, I don't remember.
Okay, so my thoughts on this, I totally support staggered terms for city council. However, we cannot make this decision in a vacuum, especially after last night. We need stability. We need to look at where our city leadership is now. While this might be the right thing to do for Morgan's Point, holding a third election in eighteen months and forcing a possible sixty percent turnover of council right after a hundred percent turnover of council is not, is not the right thing to do for our city or our residents. My understanding of the implementation is that, and this is mostly from Neil, I think, that if we decide to go ahead and implement staggered terms immediately, each of us would draw lots. And some people, three people would get one term, and two people would get two-year terms, I'm sorry, one year, three people will get a one-year term, two people will get a two-year term, and three of the current council people would apply in January, a few months from now, to be on the May twenty-twenty-four ballot.
Yes, and that would be for a two-year term.
And that would be for a two-year term. We're not changing terms. We're not changing the term limit. This is just, this would move us to an election every year for our council. So one year, three council people would be up for a two-year term, and then the next year, the mayor and two council people would be up for a two-year term. Primary advantages for me of staggered terms are, it provides continuity of leadership of our city, stability for our residents and staff, and it assures that the council will have experienced members. It will avoid the hundred percent council turnover and steep learning curves for council, and the city staff has to retrain council people when they come on, or train them if they haven't participated. I think that the twenty-twenty-three election experienced all the disadvantages of not having staggered terms. We have suffered the damage. We had ten candidates that ran, five were new, five new council people were elected. This group is committed to learning our roles and providing leadership to our city for the next two years. A reason to wait until twenty-twenty-five, the damage of not having staggered terms has already happened. Let's not exacerbate this unprecedented event by requiring sixty percent of our council to rerun for an election in twenty-twenty-four. Let's keep our team together and fulfill our commitments to the residents. Most municipal professionals agree, it takes at least one year for a new council person to be able to learn responsibilities and our city governance, especially in ongoing projects and budgeting. If we implement in twenty-twenty-five with full disclosure to all the candidates, then both the candidates and the residents are going into this with their eyes open. So the residents know that the new council that comes on within a week or however, whenever they're on, they will draw straws, and they will have a one-year term. So when you run in twenty-twenty-five, you know, I have a possibility of only a one-year term, or I have a possibility of a two-year term. I would be willing to commit during my twenty-twenty-five campaign that I will support staggered terms, and if elected, I promise I will draw the lots so that we can implement staggered terms in twenty-twenty-five. In June, we set a priority of healing our city after home rule, putting our resident staff and council people through another sixty percent possible turnover of council after a hundred percent turnover of council is not healing. Let's not be precipitous, let's evaluate the timing carefully. Just because it's the right thing to have staggered terms for council, in my opinion, now is not the right time.
They're always looking at me like, speaking on me.
Okay, yeah, so I'll jump in. I did go back and review that, that little letter I posted. And basically, for those who didn't see it, it just kind of summarizes my thoughts, which I'll be honest with you, have changed very little. As always, I appreciate your input. My concern is that we, everybody says that we support staggered terms and what we experienced X amount of months ago and what we are going through right now, particularly with the budget, and this is something I've heard quite frequently, we heard it tonight, I don't remember who said it. But delaying things so we can learn and come together, it's a great idea. What if twenty-twenty-five, we have another sweep election? We are right back where we are right now, and I got it. I, you know, I like sitting here, I like trying to help the community, and I understand that. But my concern is, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And as we continue to delay things, I go back to the question I asked council, why not us? Why not us? Somebody's going to have to do it, so why not us? You know, we're all learning, we admit that, I understand that, but I just think sooner rather than later. It's better to get things moving in the right direction for the city than to kind of just push the pause button, in my opinion.
Keep in mind, even if you run one year, doesn't mean you're not going to get reelected. So, I mean, it's, I mean, y'all kind of talking like, what if we do one year, we're not going to get reelected. Well, you're doing a good job, you know, it's what it is. So that's my input, I'm done.
So I'm, I'll just make a comment too, because I had several residents who contacted me and said, we agree with staggered terms, but we, we want this council to serve their full two years. And they told me some of their reasons, some of their reasons were just the very things we've talked about, that were. Some of their reasons were just the very things we've talked about that were new, but I, I know that this council has, I don't, I can't speak for everybody, but from the evidence I've seen, this council has poured their heart and soul into this city and has learned and learned and learned and learned, and maybe that's why we've run into a few roadblocks and things, because we're a very active city council, and so, things that I considered, first, at first I totally agreed with Jimbo, but there was something just wasn't sitting right, so I went home, and that's why I'm glad we waited this month to talk about it, but things that I considered was the, you know, Dalton has offered to meet with us two and a half hours a week, if you get in there, you don't get out in less than two and a half hours, and his time, I mean, we're talking big bucks that he's making, that's a lot of investment that he's put into this council, for those of us who have gone to visit him periodically. The other thing that I agree with Dorothy is that we do need healing time, we've had everything, you know, I ran for election in November, and I ran again in May, as did Jimbo, you know, and, and so there was a lot of, a lot of things going on in the council, and so I started to think about it from a city perspective, and I want you to know that the city of Morgan's Point has agreed to send all of us to the Texas Municipal League Conference in October, and they say it's going to be fantastic, there's groups that talk about how to run little cities, we're going to learn a lot, we're all going to pour our heart and soul into that, I know we've already gone to training for new council members at SitCog, and Mr. Bishop has gone to the training for, with TML for newly elected council members, a two-day workshop, I believe it was in.
Round Rock.
In Round Rock, yeah, in Austin area, so you've already invested a lot in us, and I feel we owe it to you to give you your full two years, and when, and I would propose that we bring this up again in June of 2024, and we vote that we're going to have staggered terms, and when you run for election, you know that you have a chance, you'll, you'll get the one-year straw. Okay. Thank you.
If you don't do it now, then you would have to wait until after the 2025 election, and that council then would be the ones that would vote to implement the staggered terms. Which you'd have.
It didn't say that in the.
To do it now, then there would be an election in '24, okay, if you don't do it now, then y'all will all serve until the election in '25, then after that election, that council then would vote to implement the staggered terms.
So.
I think that's how it reads.
Well, I think that's how it works. You can't vote now to bind this future council on staggered terms.
So it goes back to Jimbo's point, some council is going to get a short straw, so it's either this council, a future council, but you don't get to vote a future council to draw the short straw.
Well, we, the other thing that, because that's, that's a new one to me, I've not heard that, it kind of makes sense, but, you know, then kind of piggybacking on my thoughts there is, so if we don't do anything until 2025, we have another sweep election, which I hope is not the case, we have another sweep election in 2025, we got five brand-new people come up here and say, I don't support staggered terms, so, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's the self-licking ice cream cone, I guess.
The campaign, I think, you know, when we talked to the residents about us running, I think we can all be perfectly clear, and the candidates that are running that are new, they can be perfectly clear too, in their running, are they for staggered terms or not, so you'll know when you vote for somebody, if they're for staggered, staggered terms or not, so I just throw that out there.
So, you know, I've been thinking about this a whole lot, because ultimately, until you get up here, you don't realize how much work this truly is, and the amount of energy, emotional energy it is, and I totally support staggered terms, I don't believe that this is the time for our city, I, I think that the, and I didn't even think about the investment of TML, like, that's a great perspective, that's a pretty huge expense that we're, we're going to entail, and the knowledge that we're getting. Yep, I'm kicking it down the road.
Well, I don't think we can make the decision in a vacuum, I think we need to look at where the city is right now, and what's, what's in the best interest of the city.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, that all we have to do is vote, we do yea or nay, I mean, it's yes or no. Oh, we just still have the discussion.
Well, I guess it, you know. You run into the problem sitting up here of, well, I don't want to do one year and go away, well, you selfish person, that's not it at all, we made a huge commitment, a personal commitment, to do what we did to do to get up here, and we've invested a lot of energy in doing this, not because of self-ungranitization, you know, I don't get to have the company car for the weekend, so we are at a very critical point, I think, at, in the city, and I think we're making progress, and it's rough, it's really nice to sit up here and, and, you know, try to put your heart and soul into this and have somebody call you a dirtbag, I mean, that makes me feel real good, I go home at night thinking, damn, I've accomplished something, I got a new award in my cabinet. We're working really, really hard, and there's a lot of change going on, good, bad, and different, that we think that's what people want us to do. We're just now getting started, and yes, there's, there's turmoil, I'll guarantee you there's turmoil, but I don't think it's bad.
Looks like, looks like y'all pretty much made up your minds, so let's vote, I mean, we could sit and talk about it all night long, but it's not changing anything that.
Yeah, so Dennis, if I can, if I can put the motion forward, just to make sure I understand what you're saying, that my microphone's going out again, so we're saying that if we do not approve it during this cycle, it will not be back on the table until 2025 with the new, or the next council. Okay, so.
If you take no action tonight, right now, there's not a motion on the floor to approve this, it's been seconded, then the next council, there will not be an election in '24, everybody will run again in '25, and then after that '25 election, that council would make a determination on whether to implement staggered terms.
Okay, so for clarity's sake, and this, I don't want this to come off snarky, but for clarity's sake, for the notes, what I would like to do then, to, I would like to put a motion on the floor immediately.
Immediately implement staggered terms with the understanding that it's not going to be seconded, so I, so I make a motion to implement staggered terms immediately.
You can't make the motion with the understanding it's not going to be seconded, you can make the motion.
I retract my statement, I make the motion to implement staggered terms immediately.
Is there a second? Ask one more time, is there a second? Motion dies for like of a second. Moving right along.
You what? I don't know, and you know, I'm not talking that much, I keep turning off.
I would like to, I would like to combine the next two items.
Hey Dennis.
L and M.
Dennis, real quick, so just since we have Neil here, since the motion was made and basically wasn't seconded. Basically, this just dies, correct, that they, they don't need to make a motion not to implement staggered terms, okay?
It dies, yeah. Moving along, I'd like to make the next two items, which is L and M, has to do with setting the tax rate hearing and adopting the tax rate, and on L, on the first one, for, we have resetting the date for the tax rate hearing will be August the 14th, when it will be held here.
At the library.
Well, it'll be, what, 14th of the library?
Oh yeah, sorry, okay, yeah, sorry, because really, the tax rate hearing is, we're not, we don't need to bring up the 14th, the 14th is for the budget hearing in the notice, so this is for the setting the tax rate hearing and adopting the tax rate, so really, the only thing we need to be talking about is on the 15th.
Okay, on the 15th, is that what we.
What's the meeting on the 14th, then?
That is the budget hearing and approving the budget, hopefully, so the 14th, due to the, the, the sequencing of all this, that y'all originally had set that date, and we set it for, the, yeah, well, we set the tax, the tax rate, again, I'm going to ignore the budget one, since we, I think that everyone gets that one, but the, the tax rate hearing was set for the 15th at here, at 6 o'clock, with, now knowing the scheduling conflicts at this location, that we need to reset the date, time, and location, we, we can't change the date, but we can change the time and the location of the, of the meeting that y'all had already approved.
Oh, it's a suggestion that it be at 6:00 PM in the library, on the 15th?
Correct.
On what date?
August, August 15th.
15th, okay, in the library.
6:00 PM in the library.
Okay, 5:30?
I wrote down six.
Six, okay, 6 o'clock.
The library board has a meeting at 7 o'clock, so we're sensitive to their schedule, too.
And I think y'all need to make a motion on that date and time, just so it's official.
Do we?
I think so.
Motion to change the date for the tax adoption hearing to August the 15th at 6:00 PM at the library.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next thing, Dalton's not here, Carrie, do you have any city updates or anything? Does the audit or anything?
Yeah, we can just go through the, the way it's listed on here, the project updates, obviously making pretty good progress on the groundwater storage tank, I do think, talking to Jesse, there will be a few change orders to the, the overall project that we will be bringing to y'all probably at next month's council meeting, there is a generator, we have two generators, not, not the generator that we were talking about earlier for a building specific, but for the, the storage tanks, so the one over there on Morgan's Point Road, that generator is actually getting delivered tomorrow, so they think it'll take two weeks to get it up and running, so hopefully, then, you know, barring any emergency, we will be ready now, so for audit updates, council member Alan and, and myself had a discussion, I guess it was Monday, so yeah, it, time flies this week, but yeah, so really, the biggest thing, the holdup right now, is I'm still waiting for the outside consulting firm to get us the 9:30 2020 trial balance, so all the other stuff has been delivered to the auditors, but within going back and doing the bank reconciliations, basically from the start of Horizon Bank, this will allow the cleanest audit that we can have moving, going forward, so I, I thought when we had the discussion with, and the firm's name that we're using is Peacock Consulting, they were recommended from the auditor and the software company that we are utilizing to get us caught up, I, I thought he had said he'd hopefully have us an email today, but whenever he gets it, I will forward the response to member Alan, and then I can keep us all apprised.
But right now, according to your status report from last month, where the outside consultant was going to finish the books by July 31st, that's maybe looking like August 18th?
Something like that, and then, and really, I think, you know, I, today was hectic, I'll be honest, and so really, I actually had emailed, you know, the auditor, he had emailed me to ask if we still wanted to have that conversation, but, you know, after our conversation, there's, until we get there, then that's more when it needs to happen, but. But yeah, so then I was giving him an update to that thing, and he, I, I think I need to go back and review kind of his timeline, but like I said, there'll be more to follow, but we're, we are making progress, I swear, like, as soon as it gets there, we will broadcast it, any.
Yeah, I just want any slippage to be.
Right.
Loud and clear, totally disclosed to council, so they're aware of what's going on with the audit.
We will definitely be out in front of it, yep.
And I know today was not a good day, so I get it.
Uh, for the road updates, really, I think the only biggest thing, and I know Dalton had kept everyone aware about the, the project at Lake Forest with the ribbon tripping and the cutout and stuff like that, so that's been completed, and it looks good, so if you have not driven over that way, please do, so.
I've seen pictures, and it's awesome, I think.
And like I said, I think the true testament will be next week or two weeks, whenever it is, whenever the school.
Right, when the school bus starts running over it, right.
Okay, I appreciate it, Carrie, thanks for your thing. Terrence, I know you're here, you have anything you want to update on the fire department? In three, in three minutes or whatever?
Is this thing on? I don't have any update. I'll keep it short, we, we've had, we've had a great month so far, and this is kind of for the community's sake, we're in a very, very high fire danger currently, we're staffing extra duty crews and bringing in extra volunteers every day, so do your part, and don't start a fire, we really appreciate that. We did, just to let you guys know, we put two people through Officer One Academy at Teaks last month, one of our police officers successfully made it through the emergency medical responder, which is now, he's now a credentialed medical provider for the community, and attended Teaks with us, we had some other people do some professional development classes too, so it was great. Yesterday, I took BJ down from maintenance, and Chief Sibley, and we visited with the Lake Travis Fire Rescue Department in Travis County, and the command staff in the Austin Fire Department, and we have some good things coming with fuels mitigation and management, and so stay tuned for more on that, but we are working very hard on wildfire, so really, the only thing I have to say is just, please don't start a fire right now, but that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Terrence, appreciate that, good work. Matt, do you have anything?
Absolutely.
So just a few highlights on us, so last month, I came up here and stood up here and told you of my personal expectations in my department in our response time, so I'm happy to report that we have chipped off our response time by a minute, as a result of looking into the data and, and taking appropriate action that way, so we are a minute short on our response time, so it's four minutes and 31 seconds. Also with, like Terrence, Chief Assas says, one of our officers, Eric Vasquez, just recently completed his EMR training at Teaks, he still has yet to take the, the national registry test to become credentialed for that, but we have faith in having no issues that he's going to pass that and be credentialed here pretty soon, so we'll be, fulfill all the medical needs of the department again, that's our, our standard practice, is all of our officers are medically trained, it's built into our department model, and then, just the last update, we want Officer Joshua Boersma, as of this month, has been here for four years with the, with the city, so we want to congratulate him on his four years of experience with the city. And just to provide a quick update on our vehicles, because I know it's always a question, since we're, you know, coming up on the close of the budget and into a new one, I was told today that one of our vehicles has been finished installing, it's in the inspection stage, and so we're waiting on the other, and then we'll, we'll go pick them up and deliver four of our trade-ins for the two, so we're getting, we're getting closer, and then you'll be happy to see those, I'm pretty sure, all right, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Matt, appreciate it. Jess, do you have anything? Oh, yeah.
Dennis, can I speak from the finance one now? Not for this year.
No, Mr. Hankins wanted me to speak on the water safety levels, and Chief Assas know, yes, the water levels are very low at the moment, exposing all kinds of dangers, trees, in some cases, vehicles that have been sunken, boats that have been sunken, and various, you know, I guess you would call it debris. Structures and other, like, items, and we just had a most recent drowning as of this last week, and so we encourage everybody, first of all, if you can't swim, don't swim in the lake, or if you want to do that, have some kind of flotation device and some people with you, and as always, don't cliff jump, I mean, the cliffs are getting lower, so it's hard to jump off of the cliff, but somehow they're finding it, yeah, except for, they're, they're getting lower, yeah, yeah, because it's a cliff below the cliff, so, so please keep in mind, yeah, please keep in mind that if you're going to go to the lake, do so responsibly, drink responsibly, do you want, do you want to come up here, you got some, oh, just grab a mic and come on up?
Thank you, Matt.
I don't know, I want to thank all the city council members that reached out during the event, thanks to Chief Terrence for supplying guys on the second day, boat crew, we're a little short-staffed, and again, just be safe, don't drink, and then, before you go swimming, please watch Chief Terrence's water safety videos, swimming safety video.
And that's on Facebook. And that's on Facebook. We should be able to post a video on the website. Okay.
Hey, Karen.
Esther should be able to do that.
Carrie, you?
Yeah, no, and just cause I hinted on them a little bit earlier, but obviously with, when we were discussing the, the tax rate hearing, obviously with the changes that we all kind of went through last night, the, please look at your handout. If you have, if I missed anything, obviously not here, but over the next couple of days, that was my recollection over the last chaotic workshops that we've had, that I think this is an accurate depiction of where y'all wanted the budget to go. It was a handout that I, I just sent on everyone's. So like I said, nothing to discuss about tonight, but please reach out to me over the next couple of days.
Okay.
And we can just remind me at the, at the, at the end of this. So then the other one, the other handout was the requested report. It's, it's condensing all the 90 pages for the monthly reports down to a more manageable 13 pages. So I think unless directed otherwise, I will still post everything to the website on the agenda packet or, you know, under the packet for the monthly council meeting. However, what I will print y'all will be these 13 pages. So if you have questions and you can't go from here to the, the more detailed report, because it, it does, it, it closes down all the revenues into one line item. So it, it's a little, it's, it's more helpful, I think, for the expenses, but you know, at least look at it and get back with me over the next month prior to printing out the packet. But so since, since I slightly mentioned the budget, because like I said, I mean, I know there was a lot of time and effort poured in, not only by y'all, but my staff. But so since someone had asked it, you know, roughly, it got me thinking though too, over the last, since 2020, and obviously Dalton and myself didn't get here until mid-year 2021, but not including the federal grant funding that we've received of 1.1 million dollars, the city has added revenues over expenditures and, and some of these are projected based on this year of over 2.5 million dollars over the last three and a half years. So when, when we give y'all that, the balanced budget, always realize that the, it, before it gets to y'all, there's been a lot of work put into it. And so i- if we can make sure, if y'all look at these numbers and with, with the changes that y'all wanted, i- if that really is the direction that we're going, just make sure if there's anything other changes, the cleaner, the more, the more information I can get to y'all before the budget workshop, you know, the budget hearing on Monday, I think it'll make Monday and Tuesday run a lot smoother.
Thank you.
Sure. Appreciate it. Okay, gliding up here.
Oh, wait a minute, I have a quick question. I know Ronnie's not here, but Catrice is, and that is on page 77. Um, Ronnie submitted a monthly report and I was kind of shocked that the very first thing on there is says that we're currently delinquent on four accounts at the marina totaling $2,200. And my understanding is the marina rules are really clear on if you don't pay your bill, and I'm not going to get this right, but it's like you've got 15 days to make good, we send you a certified letter. If you haven't made it by 45 days, then we take your boat out of your slip and we give it to somebody else and we impound your boat. So I love our procedures on the water department because it's really clear to all residents, if they don't pay their water bill on time, you know, you get cut off and you have to have a reinstatement fee. And that keeps our bad debt expense way down and certainly our collection efforts because you don't pay your bill, you don't get water. And the marina was established very similarly. I know we have a waitlist, so I don't need to know names, but I would like to propose that we move forward pretty quickly and follow the rules of the marina and collect this money or, or get, give the slip to someone else.
And we do, we do follow the rules if they pay in full before the 45 days.
So this is four people that owe $2,200?
Yes.
And they're all still current?
One of them has gas and oil.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Cause, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure we were definitely following the rules of the marina.
We are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Talking to Roxanne earlier, she requested that we maybe put on the future, or not necessarily a future agenda, but an agenda item for especially executive session for personnel. So if you don't want to maybe, don't want to push it all the way to the next council BD, y'all wanted it at another date. And I know a lot, there's a lot of vacation coming up, so I mean, there's a.
Yeah, so we cannot meet tonight in executive session to talk about yesterday?
Okay, we can not, just not post it.
Well, we had an executive session posted, because I asked you to post it a week ago.
Didn't ask me.
I called you, Dennis, and I asked you, and we talked about it, a 90-day check-in from council. We've all been here 90 days. How's it going? What, how's it going with Dalton? How's it going with us? What do we want to do differently? You know, just kind of not in a public forum, just touching base on how we doing and what do we need to do differently? So I did ask you for that and I was surprised that, I thought it was on the agenda, but then I found out the word personnel was not listed.
Not in there, yeah.
Right. So then if we can't do it tonight, which is so disappointing to me because I feel like we're not, um, taking the situation head-on, then we have to post it 72 hours. So when is the earliest that we could have a meeting to talk about working with our city manager and moving forward in a constructive way? Saturday, would that be 72 hours?
Well, I mean, we're coming back on Monday and Tuesday, so in theory, I guess y'all will all be convened Monday for the budget hearing or Tuesday for the tax rate, so.
Is everybody comfortable waiting that long? That's almost a week from the event.
Will you be here?
But she can be available by phone and it's an executive session, so we won't be making any decisions, you know, in the executive session, but Roxanne would like to participate, just in the discussion.
Well, we're here on Monday, right? On the 14th?
If you're willing to wait, then that's fine with me.
Am I missing something? Can we not do that executive session?
Right, okay.
I think we need to move on it.
Neil, how can we put in here a generic? You're going to call an executive session, you've got to be specific. I think there are four, four categories that you can use for an executive session and you have to give notice of which of those statutory, or which of those statutes authorize you to have an executive session for that particular purpose.
So I thought it was going to be on the agenda and disappointed that it's not, but.
Are we okay with Monday then?
I am.
Can you get it posted?
Yeah, and we'll, I guess we'll, we'll add it to when we post the agenda for the, the budget hearing.
And then maybe Dalton will be back by then.
But then Neil, to, what, what I was asking you, can Roxanne participate in a meeting that she's not physically present at?
Okay, can she send me her notes in advance and I can?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, Roxanne, are you, is that something you want to do?
Or to Dennis or, you know, anyone?
Okay, going along, there's a council, have any comments to make to the citizens while you're here? Roxanne, we'll start with you. Jimbo?
Yeah, thanks for being here. Thanks for speaking your mind and letting us hear your voices. I know we all really appreciate that, so we don't always agree, but thank you anyway.
Dorothy, you're next.
Well, and then I know some of you came up to me and want to know what's going on with the city and obviously we can't talk about it as individuals. So I appreciate you hanging in there with us, trusting our judgment, that we want to move forward constructively, as constructively as possible. And so again, thanks for coming, thanks for all your comments, and please be patient with us.
I just want to echo, echo that, you know, we are all doing the very best we can. I also want to say that, you know, this is a lot harder than, than anyone could possibly imagine, because we are dealing with people's lives. I think the city council loves this city. I think they love our employees. I think that we have made concessions in so many different areas and it really pains me when people are badmouthing saying you're kicking it down the road or you're not doing, you don't care about our employees, because that's just not true. And, and if you look at, at the way we voted, you can see that distinctly, like we've made concessions all over the place. So we are for our employees and we are for this city.
Yeah, me too. Sometimes it may not seem like it, but we really do care. I mean, otherwise we wouldn't have done all of this. So let us know what you think. We'll be civil or not, but we try to be.
Thank y'all for being here.
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
We do have a meeting on Monday and Tuesday, the 14th and 15th of August, so you're welcome to attend. They are, are open to the public. One's on a budget, one's on tax rate. Yes, miss? I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you. No, ma'am? That's our, that's our deal. That's our, yeah, you bet. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?